And noon.
Noon.
Noon, oh, we can do it.
It's noon, yes.
Well, welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session.
Good afternoon. This is the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, August 26, 2019. The time is 1:02 PM and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of zoning map and zoning text amendments, special permits, and an authorization in Manhattan Community District 10. Our presenter is Allison Brown.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lenox Terrace Development Associates proposes several actions at Lenox Terrace, an existing development located in the Manhattan neighborhood of Harlem in Community District 10. The actions will facilitate the addition of five 28-story mixed-use buildings and one six-story mixed-use building and include the addition of approximately 1,600 residential units, 400 to 500 of which would be affordable. The applicant seeks the commission's approval for a zoning map and text amendment, special permit waivers in relation to bulk and parking, and a curb cut authorization. Lenox Terrace Development spans approximately 12 acres or three city blocks. It is bordered by Malcolm X Boulevard, also known as Lenox Avenue to the west, West 135th Street to the north, Fifth Avenue to the east, and West 132nd Street to the south. Lenox Terrace was developed pursuant to the now expired Harlem Urban Renewal Plan, which was originally adopted by the City Planning Commission in 1952. The Lenox Terrace buildings were completed in 1958, which includes six 16-story towers and five one-story commercial buildings. Originally built for middle-income housing, it holds approximately 1,700 residential rental units, 80% of which are subject to rent stabilization. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of residential, commercial, and institutional uses with heights ranging from 1 to 18 stories. There are several parks and playgrounds in the median area, including the Howard Bennett Playground here and the Abraham Lincoln Playground here. Notable institutions in the surrounding area include the Harlem Hospital, the Schaumburg Center, and the Russworm School. A number of prominent churches are also located nearby, including the Mother AME Zion Church, located here, which is a New York City landmark. The project area is well-served by public transit with access to the number two and three subway lines at the corner of West 135th Street and Malcolm X Boulevard. The M7, M12, M1, and BX33 all stop along one of the streets bounding the project site. Now rotating our view, looking northeast, we see there are several other Tower-in-the-Park style developments in the surrounding area, including the Abraham Lincoln Houses, Riverton Houses, sorry, Riverton Square, and Savoy Park. Further in the distance, we see the Harlem River separating Manhattan from the Bronx. The site and surrounding area is almost entirely zoned R-72, which is typical of Harlem. R-72 allows a maximum residential FAR of 3.44 or 4.0 pursuant to quality housing regulations. The development site currently holds an FAR of 2.92. Avenues in the surrounding area are mostly zoned with C14 commercial overlays, which allow for neighborhood-serving retail. A few R8 and R8 zoning districts are located nearby, which allow higher residential FARs of 6.02 and 7.2 respectively. Two blocks east of the project area is the Special East Harlem Corridors District. It is a R9 zoning district, which allows a maximum residential FAR of eight. The project area is also located in a transit zone and a fresh zone. Walking around the site, we see that across Malcolm X Boulevard to the west of the project area are four- and five-story residential buildings with ground-floor commercial use and a 16-story residential building. Across West 135th Street, to the north of the project area, is the Harlem Hospital Center, the Russworm School, and the Howard Bennett Playground. Across Fifth Avenue to the east of the project area is the Abraham Lincoln Playground and the New York City Housing Authority's Lincoln Houses. Finally, across West 132nd Street to the south of the project area are a collection of four-story brownstones, five-to-seven-story residential buildings, and the Bethel AME Church, located here. Here we see in plan view the existing conditions of the development today. Again, Malcolm X to the west, West 132nd Street to the south, Fifth Avenue to the east, and West 135th Street to the north. Extending south from West 135th Street is Lenox Terrace Place, also known as Ella Baker Terrace, and intersecting with Ella Baker Terrace is West 134th Street, a segment of the pre-existing thru road. It's right here. There are six existing residential towers of 16 stories that are proposed to remain, highlighted here in red, and there are five existing one-story commercial buildings which hold retail tenants such as grocery stores, banks, and food and beverage establishments. There are 27 existing retail frontages, nine of which are vacant. There are also two lots within the site that are entirely vacant. The southern lot has been vacant since 2009, while the northern lot has been vacant since 2006. All vacant lots and one-story commercial buildings are proposed to be redeveloped as part of the proposed development. Here we see the interior of the super block, which is predominantly surface parking. Pedestrian vehicular through-block connections are extremely limited due to landscaping and chain-link fences. The proposed rezoning area also contains four additional tax lots that are not owned by the applicant. These lots contain the Metropolitan AME Church, the New York City Parks Department Hansbrough Recreation Center, the Archdiocese of New York Kennedy's Community Center. These buildings are not proposed to be developed as part of this application. So here we see a rendering of the proposed development looking northwest. The proposed new buildings, highlighted in yellow, would replace existing low-rise commercial buildings with five new 28-story mixed-use buildings and one six-story mixed-use buildings. The two towers located along Malcolm X Boulevard would be set back and rise sheer from six-story bases, while the remaining three towers would be set back and rise sheer from four-story bases. All five of the new towers would be approximately 285 feet tall, matching the height of the adjacent Harlem Hospital. The six-story building located along Malcolm X Boulevard would have a height of 68 feet. The first and second floors of all new buildings are proposed to contain a mix of retail, commercial space, community facility space, and/or accessory residential uses. In total, these buildings will add 1.5 million square feet of floor area and 1,600 new dwelling units, approximately 400 to 500 of which will be permanently affordable. Together, the proposed new buildings and existing residential buildings will total 3 million square feet, including 2.8 million square feet of residential use, 130,000 square feet of commercial use, 14,000 square feet of community facility uses, and in total, the development will hold approximately 3,300 dwelling units. The applicant also proposes the creation of approximately six acres of open space and underground parking garages beneath each of the new buildings. Seen here in plan view, we can see that the proposed below-grade parking would allow for the creation of the open space as well as new east-west connections. One, the promenade, which allow for the natural extension of West 134th Street through the block; and the second, the serpentine, which would curve beginning out West 133rd Street and allow for the connection to Fifth Avenue. Two sky bridges would traverse over a private driveway to connect the second story of the six-story building with the northwest tower and with the southwest tower. Five of the 11 existing curb cuts would remain on-site, and 12 new curb cuts would be introduced. The applicant proposes five separate actions to facilitate this construction, and I will walk the commission through these actions on the following slides. So first, the applicant proposes zoning map change to rezone the project area from R-72 and R-72 with C14 overlay, seen on the left, to a C62 district, which is an R8 equivalent. This would allow an increase in FAR from 3.44 to 6.02, but the applicant proposes a development of 5.61 FAR. Concurrent with the zoning map action, the applicant proposes a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area, or MIH, area, co-terminus with the rezoned area. This would facilitate the construction of 411 to 493 permanently affordable units, depending on which affordable housing option is chosen, either Option 1 or Option 2. The applicant also seeks a special permit to modify certain bulk regulations within a large-scale general development. While the district does not limit height, waivers must be sought for the proposed setback and minimum distance between buildings. The waivers would allow the five new towers to penetrate the sky exposure plane. As it applies to the southwest tower, which fronts on both Malcolm X Boulevard and West 132nd Street, the building is required to be set back 15 feet at a height of 85 feet and then continue to follow the sky exposure plane upward. The applicant proposes a building which sets back 10 feet from Malcolm X Boulevard and from 132nd Street, West 132nd Street, at a height of approximately 68 feet. The building then continues a sheer rise upward with no sky exposure plane relief. The red shading shown here represents the extent of the area for which a waiver is sought, approximately 25 feet. The same sky exposure plane relief is sought for the northwest tower fronting on Malcolm X Boulevard and 135th Street, for the north tower fronting on Lenox Terrace Place, for the northeast tower fronting on Fifth Avenue and West 135th Street, and for the southeast tower fronting on Fifth Avenue and West 132nd Street. The distance between buildings waiver is sought for the proposed distance between the six-story building and the tower bases along Malcolm X Boulevard. A waiver is requested to allow the distance to be limited to 33 feet, whereas an as-of-right basis, 40 feet would be required. This special permit has findings in relation to the distribution of floor area, open space, light, and air. The applicant has prepared a statement of findings that can be found in the commission's briefing package. The applicant also seeks a special permit to reduce required parking requirements on the site. The site currently holds 387 parking spaces, which are required per the certificate of occupancy for the existing buildings. The applicant proposes to construct 138 additional spaces totaling 525 spaces for the new development. The applicant would otherwise be required to provide anywhere from 847 to 880 parking spaces. Parking spaces are proposed to be located below ground to make space for the proposed green space and cross-block connections on ground level. This special permit has findings related to traffic congestion and surrounding uses. The applicant has prepared a statement of findings that can be found in the commission's briefing package. Finally, the applicant also seeks an authorization to modify curb cut requirements to allow the creation of additional and wider curb cuts than would otherwise be allowed. Currently, 11 curb cuts surround the super block. Five of the existing will remain, and 12 new ones will be put in place. Proposed curb cuts range anywhere from 25 to 60 feet wide, including spays. Existing to remain curb cuts are approximately 35 feet wide. As of right, only one curb cut permitted on any street frontage of a zoning lot is allowed with a width ranging anywhere from 12 to 22 feet. This authorization has findings related to the character of the surrounding area and curbside parking, and again, the applicant has prepared a statement of findings within the commission's briefing package. An environmental impact statement was conducted with DCP acting on behalf of the CPC as lead agency. The notice of completion for the DEIS was issued on August 23, 2019. The draft EIS identifies significant adverse impacts related to open space shadows, historic resources, transportation, and construction. Possible mitigation measures are identified in the draft EIS and will be further explored between the draft and final EIS. All proposed actions will facilitate the proposed development. I will now go through several renderings the applicant team has provided showing the envisioned future of the site. So here, we're standing at the corner of West 133rd Street and Malcolm X Boulevard, looking northeast. Directly in front of us is the six-story building. We can see the sky bridge connecting the building to the southwest tower base. Here's the northwest tower, and we can see Harlem Hospital in the distance. Here at the corner of West 135th Street and Malcolm X Boulevard, our back is to the Schaumburg Center. We can see the northwest tower base and tower and how it relates to the existing 16-story residential building and the Metropolitan AME Church. Here's a close-up view of the envisioned retail along Malcolm X Boulevard. And here, we can see another view of the retail and the proposed second-story uses of a possible community facility space or accessory residential uses on the second Here's an internal view. This is along the promenade, which is the natural extension of West 134th Street through the block. We can see both passive recreation space and the active recreation space proposed as a mix of options within the development. And here, we can see the great lawn and the serpentine pedestrian walkway lined with cherry trees. This would allow for connection from Malcolm X Boulevard to Fifth Avenue extending from West 133rd Street. Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Vice Churnuckles.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Could you, is it possible to key in on the Lenox Avenue frontage where the two towers interact with the six-story?
The rendering?
Yes.
Here.
So could you just elaborate on how 470, which is now in the background, is there a plan view of how?
How the circulation?
Access that and how the traffic would come in and out, et cetera?
Sure. If I could just actually continue through to... Is this helpful?
Yeah.
So this is a possible pedestrian circulation network shown through the development. So here, this is the corner that we would have been standing on in the rendering. So this shows the six-story building and the southwest tower and the connection through that would be covered by, in part, by the sky bridge. And the pathway would need to meander through to work around the existing residential buildings.
All right, so there's no vehicular access here?
No, this isn't vehicular access. This is pedestrian access. There is vehicular access... Oh, sorry, this is vehicular access in a driveway.
That's what I was...
Sorry, yes.
Can you drop off in front of 470?
Yes.
Which is here.
So here's a driveway plan showing the direction of the vehicular movement. So cars could travel down the driveway here and drop off to this building and then continue outward back to Malcolm X Boulevard or Lenox Avenue.
The building that is now, or was formerly the Metropolitan AME Church, which I believe has been sold to a private developer, do you have any sense of what a planned building is going to look like there and how it would interact with what's proposed here?
So, any development there is not part of this application. However, it is within the rezoned area. The draft EIS analyzed the site in particular as a projected development site, knowing that sale was happening. The rezoning would increase the allowable FAR on the site, and the EIS analyzed that the redevelopment could result in 69 units, 21 of which would be affordable, and approximately 7,000 square feet of community facility space to be used for church use or other uses.
Okay, so if I understand you, the point of entry for 470, you would come to the northernmost, come in and out again?
Yes.
Is that how that works? And what about the entry points for the garages for?
For the below-ground parking.
Below-ground parking.
So the entry ramps are located, one is located here on West 135th Street, here, down here, and here. So there's four ramps leading down into the below-grade parking.
So the current residents of Lenox Terrace, who now park above ground, would have assigned spaces?
Yes.
Within the new parking structure?
Yes, everyone that currently has a parking space, their parking space would be retained in the new parking proposal.
With regard to the open space, now, this is, this is private space, is it not? So what would, what would the access be on a daily basis?
So it is actually not yet determined if this will be fully public or open only to the residents of Lenox Terrace. It's still an open discussion with the applicant and the residents.
That'll be an interesting discussion.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sure I'll have more, but that's...
Of course.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yeah, just following up on those thoughts. I mean, you represented earlier that the applicant believes that those pedestrian routes would be an extension of 134th and 133rd Street. So again, that question of who controls it, who's allowed, and so on, but there is a sort of inherent conflict because of the two apparent access points, you've put curb cuts, or they've put curb cuts, which means it'll be a traffic pedestrian conflict at those points. So it's hard to see, you know, the devil's in the details, how exactly that works out on the ground.
Yes, at these two locations, there is proposed sidewalk and vehicular pathway so that the two uses can exist in the same area, but adjacent to one another.
I see that as a bit of a tricky conflict area. And the other thing is, I'm just curious, these sky bridges, why are they necessary? And why wouldn't you simply have a contiguous building obviating the need for an exception to the distance between buildings?
That's an excellent point. So the, the spaces between the buildings allow for a breakup in building length and allow for the cars and pedestrians to access the development within the block and not have a very long building frontage. So it just allows more porosity into the site, while the sky bridges allow for the continuation of the second-floor use, so it's more flexible from a mix of different tenants.
Strikes me as another contradiction. Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, I have some affordable housing questions and also a question about the zoning choices and the commercial space. So you mentioned that the, or maybe you mentioned, or it's in the briefing sheet, that of the existing dwelling units, approximately 80% are subject to rent stabilization.
Yes.
How, under, under what circumstances is there financing about to expire? What's the, more details about the status of the current rent stabilization would be good to have as this goes forward?
Okay, absolutely. I can talk to the applicant team and return to the commission with that information.
And also, I gather that it's, while it's being mapped for MIH in Options 1 and 2, it's not yet decided?
Correct.
Either which will be?
Correct.
All right, so that's something to find out more about as we, as we go along. On the, the commercial space that's in the project, EIS suggests that it's all to be Is that the case? Or are they looking at above-the-street-level office uses?
The first two floors on any of the newly proposed buildings could be a mix of predominantly retail, but also just commercial use, community facility use, accessory residential use.
Okay. And do they have a plan yet for tenants? I realize that development is a long, long way down the road.
Correct. I mean, the planned final build here in the EIS is projected as 2026, so no tenants have been identified yet.
Okay. So that gets to my zoning question, whether, you know, having a C62 designation is kind of an anomaly for this area, and it made me wonder whether you could get to the same result with an R8, which would be an upzoning that would still facilitate MIH, but with a commercial overlay that would allow that same level of commercial and community facility use. Is there a technical reason why we're not using a residential designation with an overlay?
I believe the residential designation with the overlay was discussed in an earlier iteration, but ultimately, the applicant proposed to pursue the C62 district. So I can return to the commission with a stronger rationale of why that was decided.
Okay, that'd be helpful. And I guess my, that brings, your previous answer brings up my last question, and that's about phasing. Can you remind us what their plans are about what gets built when and when the open space comes online with respect to all of that?
So this is subject to change, but essentially, all the western buildings and the northeast tower are proposed to be completed in Phase 1, which is projected for 2023, and the remaining two buildings are proposed to be completed by 2026. The parking and open space would be developed in the same timeframe, but...
You mean, so some parking would be developed in Phase 1 and some in Phase 2?
Correct, yeah. And public space as well, but this is subject to change and...
Okay. And would all of that be committed to as part of these approvals? In other words, we know that we're getting the Lenox Avenue buildings first and then the others, or can they shift it around as their development plans may evolve?
I'm not sure if the construction phasing plan would be memorialized in restrictive declaration or other documents, so I'll have to double-check on that and get back to you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And I would anticipate that the equal moment would be not just the phasing of the buildings, but probably more importantly, the open space and how it's commensurate to the amount of square footage of building that's constructed.
Yep, yep. And, and the parking to, to deal with, the transition from current parking to future parking.
Commissioner Ron Persson.
Yes, all right. Thank you for the presentation. I had a question with regards to the height of those sky bridges. Is it high enough where a fire truck or regular truck can go through?
There's a proposed 15-foot clear width, or height, sorry, between the driveway and the top of the, the bottom of the sky bridge.
If you could ask the applicants, though, to confirm whether that meets the commissioner's question about the ability of FDNY vehicles to go underneath.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Okay, this application with lots of interesting issues is certified.
Hey, the second item on our agenda comes with a slight correction to our agenda, which is on page 54, is a, it's a presentation and not a referral of a proposed modification to a previously approved large-scale residential development in Manhattan Community District 3. And our presenter, Matthew Pietrus, will give more background on the reason why we did that.
Good afternoon. This is a city application by HPD to modify the Seward Park Extension LSRD and subdivide it into two not contiguous LSRDs. This application does not induce development, but it is a corrective action to remove an overlapping block, which is currently located in two large-scale developments, and that's currently not allowed by the zoning resolution. The project is in the Lower East Side neighborhood in Manhattan, Community District 3. Tower-in-the-Park residential developments are the predominant land use in form to the south and east of the project area. To the west and north are tenement-style walk-ups that are typical of the area. These usually consist of ground-floor retail with residences on the upper floors. The land use history of the site begins in 1955, when the city established the Seward Park Urban Renewal Area, which consisted of 10 blocks to be redeveloped. In 1965, that area expanded to include 14 blocks with the creation of the Seward Park Extension Urban Renewal Area. At the same time as that approval, the city established the Seward Park Extension LSRD, which is shown here in red. Between 1965 and 1983, the city approved several land use actions that facilitated development in the site, and in 2005, the urban renewal area expired. In 2012, the city established the Seward Park Mixed Use Large-Scale General Development, which is more commonly known as Essex Crossing. This large-scale contains six sites, four of which are completed and two of which are still under construction. The Essex Crossing LSGD is shown here in purple. As you can see, when the Essex Crossing, when Essex Crossing was mapped, a portion of it overlapped the Seward Park Extension LSRD. The agency discovered this overlap in the wake of a new development, which is subject to the second applicant, the second presentation I will give. That proposed development is subject, oh, that's right. This overlapping block was previously vacant but was developed as part of Essex Crossing and now contains a 15-story residential and commercial building with a privately-owned public space to the north of the building. public space to the north of the building. Because the zoning resolution does not allow a single property to be located within two large-scale plans, this application is a corrective action to remove that overlapping portion from the Seward Park Extension LSRD. To correct this overlap, HPD proposes subdividing the Seward Park Extension LSRD into two LSRDs. This subdivision would create the Seward Park Extension West LSRD, shown in blue, and the Seward Park Extension East LSRD, which is shown in orange. The existing Essex Crossing LSGD is depicted in purple and will remain unchanged as part of this application. In addition to changing the boundaries of the LSRD, this corrective action would update the zoning calculations and site plan for the East and West LSRDs. The existing and available floor area on the sites is calculated based on the existing conditions of the sites, and this includes previous approvals. Any future development within these areas would be subject to separate land use actions. In summary, HPD proposes a modification to the site plan and zoning calculations of the Seward Park Extension LSRD, which consists of subdivision into two non-contiguous East and West LSRDs to correct an overlap, an overlapping noncompliance within two large-scale developments. And just before answering some questions, I just wanted to note that the agency is actively working to identify large scales throughout the five boroughs to avoid situations like this in the future. And also, while HPD is still finalizing the application, we wanted to present this project to you because the next presentation is within the same geography as this one.
And when HPD finalizes its application, we'll bring it back to the commission, recall this presentation, and then refer it out to the community board, because our goal is to have both of them track and go through together. The next application has a full ULR process, so there's plenty of time for this one to catch up. But we did think it made sense to have this technical correction presented to the commission before the next real project. So questions on this?
Yes, Commissioner Levin.
So will this information be referred to the, I mean, not a technical referral, but will be made available to the community board and the borough president when they get the materials for the Go Broom application?
So this will, once the application is filed and fully complete, we're going to send it directly to the community board. The HPD actually presented already a pre-ULR presentation to Community Board Three in July. So we're aware of this.
Included this overlap information?
Yes.
Okay.
It really is the technicality of not having the completed application, but again, we think of the two as traveling together. And so in all of our presentations and discussions, the two have gone together.
Okay.
Commissioner Marine. Other questions? Okay, then on to the next one.
Great.
Okay, the third item on the agenda, page 70, is a certification of zoning map and zoning text amendments, special permits, and an authorization and a referral of a modification to a previously approved large-scale residential development in Manhattan Community District Three. And Matthew Pietrus will present.
This is a private application by Go Broom LLC and the Chinatown Planning Council Development Fund. The application includes four actions, a zoning map amendment, zoning text amendment, zoning authorization, and large-scale waivers. These actions would facilitate two new mixed-use buildings in Manhattan Community District Three. The project is located in the Lower East Side neighborhood, and the geography is subject to the previous HPD application. It is proposed to be located in the newly subdivided Seward Park Extension West LSRD. I covered some of the site's history in the previous application, so I'll just focus on site-specific actions here. In 1967, LPC designated the Beth Hammer-Hagudal, or BHH, synagogue as an individual landmark. That site is shown in the center of the screen. In 1968, the project area and area to the north and east of the area were rezoned from R72 to C15, C61, and R8. The project area is currently located within the R8 district. In 1980, the Hong Ning Building, shown just south of BHH, received height and setback waivers that allow modifications to height factor regulations. This building contains senior housing and an accessory parking lot. In 2017, the BH synagogue was mostly razed from a fire on the property. The project area is coterminous with the Seward Park Extension West LSRD, which will be the newly subdivided LSRD. That area is shown here in the white dotted line. The current zoning lot boundary, shown in blue, consists of the Hong Ning Building, 384 Grand Street, which is a five-story residential and commercial building in the southeast corner of the zoning lot, and Lot 75, which contains a parking lot that is accessory to the Hong Ning Building. As part of this application, the LSRD would be modified to reflect two changes in the zoning lot. First, 384 Grand would be subdivided out of the zoning lot into a separate zoning lot. It would still remain part of the LSRD, and in the future, with the proposed actions, may expand its commercial floor area by up to 5,000 square feet. Second, BHH would be included in the zoning lot and incorporated into the LSRD. The new zoning lot is shown in blue. This slide shows the proposed development site in red that would contain the two new mixed-use developments. These buildings are built on the parking lot and also over BHH's lot. The application, the applicant team proposes incorporating the remnants of BHH into the new development on Norfolk Street, which I will speak to in a few slides. The proposed development would contain two new mixed-use buildings containing mostly residential use, with some commercial and community facility space. It would contain a total of 488 dwelling units, 208 of which are proposed to be affordable. Currently, 93 of the units are proposed as Mih Option One units, and 115 are proposed as affordable independent residences for seniors or heirs units. The proposed development on Suffolk Street would rise to 310 feet and contain 30 stories. It would also contain mostly residential floor area and up to 373 dwelling units, 93 of which would be affordable. The applicants also plan to dedicate about 40,000 square feet of community facility space to the Chinese-American Planning Council. Currently, the Chinese-American Planning Council has offices in disparate locations throughout Chinatown and the Lower East Side, and this development would allow them to consolidate some of their programs and their office spaces into one location. The building would also contain some commercial space, which is proposed for retail on the ground floor. The Norfolk Building would rise 16 stories, or about 165 feet, and would contain all 115 of the proposed heirs units. It would also contain up to 4,000 square feet of community facility space, which would be dedicated to BHH to use as a cultural center. As mentioned earlier, unfortunately, the BHH synagogue was devastated by a fire in May of 2017. The photo to the left of the screen shows the remnants of the BHH synagogue. The existing tower in the right of that picture will unfortunately have to be demolished because it is structurally, it is not structurally sound and is a safety hazard. The diagram to the right of the screen depicts how the applicants propose to safely incorporate these remnants into the ground floor of the building. In order to facilitate these two developments, the applicants seek approval of a series of actions. The first is a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from an R8 to an R91 with a C25 overlay. The R91 district allows for a maximum residential floor area ratio of nine and community city FAR of 10. It also permits a maximum base height of 125 feet and a maximum building height of 285 feet. The C25 commercial overlay would permit commercial uses within these new developments. Currently, the quality housing program is not permitted within large-scale developments. To allow the quality housing program to apply, the applicants seek a text amendment to Sections 23011, 2801, and 7803. The applicants believe the quality housing bulk envelope is appropriate in the surrounding context, especially given the new Essex Crossing development, which went through an extensive design consideration. Also, due to the significant increase in residential floor area, this area will be designated an Mih area. The applicants also seek a zoning authorization to eliminate required parking on the site. Lot 75 currently contains 33 parking spaces that are accessory to the Hong Ning Senior Building. Most of the senior residents in the building do not own cars, and the parking has consistently remained underutilized since its construction in the early 1980s. The applicants also seek a new special permit and new authorization to waive certain bulk regulations. The waiver site plan to the right of the screen gives an overview of the waivers being sought, and the list to the left shows the waivers by building, which I will explain in more detail in the next few slides. The applicants also seek a waiver for the LSRD to distribute floor area without regard to zoning lot lines. As we discussed, the Hong Ning Senior Building is an existing building that was completed in 1982. In 1980, it received heightened setback waivers pursuant to height factor regulations. Because a proposed text amendment would apply quality housing regulations to the new developments and the entire zoning lot, Hong Ning's height factor waivers are no longer valid, and the building would become legally noncompliant. The two new waivers to street wall location and heightened setback would bring the existing building back into compliance under the new quality housing regulations. For the new developments, the applicants seek a new special permit to modify distance between building regulations and height and setback regulations. Under the proposed R91 district for quality housing, the required window-to-window distance is 60 feet, and the required window-to-wall distance is 50 feet. The Suffolk Building is proposed to be located about 47 feet from the existing Hong Ning Building. The applicants also seek heightened setback waivers for the Suffolk Building. In an R91 district, the permitted setback above the maximum base height of 125 feet is 15 feet along a narrow street. While the applicant's proposed base height of 48 feet on Suffolk Street is below the maximum allowable base height to match the existing context on the street, the required setback is 15 feet, but they are proposing 10 feet. The applicants also seek a waiver to exceed the maximum building height. The permitted building height is 285 feet, and the applicants propose a maximum base height of 310 feet, and those areas are shown in red. For the Norfolk Building, the applicants seek a special permit to modify the distance between buildings. It is proposed to be located about 12 feet from the Hong Ning Building, which is less than the 40 feet required as measured from wall to wall. There are no proposed windows on the existing Hong Ning facade, and there is no existing windows across from the Hong Ning facade on the proposed Norfolk Building. The applicants also seek a special permit to allow for the transfer of floor area without regard to zoning lot lines. Because 384 Grand Street will be subdivided out of the zoning lot, a waiver is required to allow for the transfer 15,000 square feet. The transfer site, or 384 Grand, is shown in yellow on your screen, and the receiving site is shown in blue. This application was required to conduct an environmental impact statement. The analysis found no potential for adverse impacts in the chapters on the left of the screen. It did find potential for adverse impacts for transportation as it relates to vehicular and pedestrian traffic, as well as during construction, as it relates to traffic and noise. Mitigation to these impacts will be explored between the draft and final EIS. To facilitate these two new developments, Go Broom LLC and the Chinatown Planning Council Housing Development Fund seek approval of a zoning map and zoning text amendment, as well as a zoning authorization and large-scale waivers.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Bernie.
Hi, thank you. Could you go to slide 17, I think it is?
Sure.
Right, so I'm just curious, in this, on the space between buildings, are the windows on those facades that are facing each other?
The windows are proposed on the top, so 60 to 60 here. And then window to wall will be here.
Okay. Because, you know, I mean, I live on a 60-foot-wide, narrow street, and I can see into my neighbor's apartment, and it's just about on the cusp of what's reasonable in terms of privacy. Another 20 feet off that, or 40 feet, would, strikes me as being very uncomfortable.
Sure. So the reason for these, these waivers are because the Hong Ning Building is actually recessed from Norfolk Street? And so in order to, there's kind of a balancing act that the applicants are proposing that is best seen, let's see. Appendix. We'll do this one. So if they were to meet the requirement here, you'd see this dotted line here is where they would have to go in order to meet this window-to-window requirement?
Right.
And then if they were also to seek this waiver, or not seek the waiver here?
Right.
For the setback, it would be a much more slender and taller building. And so they're trying to balance an appropriate height, so the building would, with their proposed floor area and increasing floor area, would actually be a lot higher than what's currently proposed. So they're trying to make what's, what they believe is appropriate between the window-to-window, the setback.
Got a site that doesn't really work, and they're trying to make it work?
They are, yeah. And it's really because of this existing building here that's recessed.
Don't really see a 40-foot-wide, that's why we have the space between buildings regulation, because that's an issue, right?
Sure. We can certainly have the applicant speak more to the rationale for this design criteria.
I also think it would be helpful to have examples of other instances in which the commission has waived it to get a sense of what other developments we may already have.
Sure.
And could you go to slide 19 as well? So again, now we've got less than 12 feet. So Joe, I'm curious, what's the depth of that? How far does it go front to back? What's the overlap between the two buildings?
So here.
So it's at the top?
Yes, it's going to be right here.
Right, right.
Yeah. So I want to note, too, that this is, it is a very short distance, and this is probably the largest waiver they're seeking to modify between distance between buildings, but these are wall-to-wall.
So there's no.
So there's no windows on this side.
But you do get this rather unfortunate sliver between, I mean, why wouldn't they just build it right up against the building and eliminate that 12-foot gap altogether?
Sure, we can absolutely have them speak to that, too, as it relates to design criteria. I believe it is so they can access this open space, which is here. Otherwise, you'd have to walk, the connection would be here.
Right, but you could leave the first floor, you could leave the first floor open, couldn't you, I suppose?
Sure. So we can have them speak to that as well.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Other comments? Commissioner Marine.
Thank you for the presentation. One of your slides, you, you present the, the availability of development rights coming off of 384, the 384 Building onto the site. So how, how does that work in terms of the transference?
So this is the, a special permit waiver that's typical of some large scales. So the, because it's being subdivided out, it was originally part of the same zoning lot, so they didn't need that waiver. But now that it's being subdivided out, they do need that waiver, and that's going to be going into the Norfolk Building here.
And so are those, are those rights being transferred for a fee? Or is it being transferred as a result of the development without a fee?
We can have the applicant speak to the specifics of how the, like, what the business is, the business terms of that transfer going to be. But I believe it is for a fee.
I'd be interested in knowing more about that, please.
Sure. And it will be dedicated floor area, too, for a specific reason, and those terms we can have them discuss as it comes back.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Okay, the application is certified.
Great, thank you.
The fourth item on the agenda, page 124, is a certification of a special permit in Manhattan Community District Two. Our presenter, Sylvia Lee.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a private application for a special permit to legalize a retail establishment of over 10,000 square feet, encompassing portions of an existing five-story commercial building located at 503 Broadway in an M15B zoning district in Soho, Manhattan Community District Two. As shown on the photo on the left, the space subject to the requested special permit, highlighted with yellow dash line, is currently occupied by Zara and is owned by the applicant as a commercial condo since the acquisition in 19, in 2014. For background, prior to Zara, the space was most recently occupied by tenant Old Navy under a 10-year lease. The rest of the building is separately owned, commercially occupied, and not part of this special permit. As shown on the area map, the project site is a through-lot with approximately 125 feet of frontage on Broadway and the same length of frontage on Mercer Street between Broom and Spring Streets. The site is located within an M15B zoning district, which permits light, industrial, and commercial uses as of right up to 5FAR. As in all other standard M1 districts, Use Group Six and 10A, retail establishments of 10,000 square feet or more is only permitted by special permit, with certain specified exceptions. The surrounding Soho neighborhood is highly mixed-use, with Broadway as a major commercial corridor. Buildings within the vicinity, especially ones along Broadway, are typically loft buildings ranging from three to 12 stories. And how retail establishments on the lower floors and commercial offices, joint living workrooms of artists, and other types of residential lofts on the upper floors. Many buildings on the development site's block and on blocks north and south on Broadway span full length of the block, either from Broadway to Mercer or Broadway, Broadway to Crosby Street. These buildings typically have their customer-focused frontages on Broadway and service freight entrances on Mercer Street or Crosby Street. The development site is easily accessible by public transit, served by nearby stations on NQRW, BDFM, and six subway lines, as well as bus services. Shown here is the proposed ground floor site plan. In red dash line is the boundary of the zoning lot, and then highlighted in blue is the proposed waiver area for the large retail establishment. This is the ground floor. As shown, the large retail establishment has its retail entrance on Broadway. has its retail entrance on Broadway. Deliveries are received at the Mercer Street entrance where the freight elevators are located. As proposed, the single large retail establishment would encompass 13,630 zoning square feet on a ground floor, highlighted here, northern portion, 14,005 zoning square feet on a northern portion of the second floor, and about 15,000 square feet in a northern portion of the cellar, totaling 27,635 zoning square feet and about 42,656 gross square feet, including the cellar space. Given that the building's certificate of occupancy already lists large retail use on the northern portion of the ground floor and the cellar, which is considered legal nonconforming, the proposed legalization accounts for about 1/3 increment of the existing legal nonconforming large retail use. In M1 districts, the Commission may allow retail establishments 10,000 square feet or more, provided that certain findings regarding traffic and land use impacts can be made, which are listed here. The applicant's statement of findings is included in your packages. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Vice General Knuckles.
Thank you, Sylvia. Our text says that the applicant states that proceedings in support of the application, which I assume is this kind of application, were commenced but not completed. When were those... Or when was that application process initiated?
Are you referencing the interim plan that the applicant noted in the... Sorry, would you mind rephrasing your question?
Says while Zara has been in operation, the northern portion of the second floor has been shown on temporary COs as a use group 17. According to the applicant, it purchased the condo unit with the intention of obtaining a large retail special permit, which it's doing now.
Yeah. The applicant never actually moved forward with that plan, and they didn't file the large... The second floor as retail uses with the DOB and never started. They commenced pursuing the special permit, but did not move forward. And so, the application was on hold at the department for a number of years. I can double-check when they first came to the department, but there was a long time lag between when the applicant first came to city planning and now.
So, when he... He's operating under... Or they are operating under a TCO now? Or what's the status?
So, currently, the applicant... The building has a temporary... Yeah, a TCO that lists the second floor as use group 17 factory space, which is out of compliance. I believe the building has received violations from the DOB Buildings Department.
Am I correct, Sylvia, that this is one of the buildings that had been operating on the theory that every cash register was a separate under-10,000-square-foot store? And that DOB has now gone back and issued violations against a number of these?
Yeah, there's been iterations of TCOs issued in this building and other buildings. My... Our understanding is for some of these buildings may include this one, that the upper-floor establishment, even though it was, in fact, a part of Zara, was probably at one point recognized as separate use group 6 uses because of separate cash registers that exist on the floor. The Buildings Department has since issued violations when those situations occurred.
The department had had concerns about this interpretation, and so were pleased when buildings went out and started issuing these violations. And I think that some of the applications that we're seeing may be as a result of that.
Just a follow-up, Chair. It says, again, in the text, it says that they didn't complete the application due to changes in the applicant's management and lack of institutional continuity. I mean, Zara's has been there since 2015, has it not?
14, yes.
14.
Yeah, the... I think the applicant would need to speak to that at the hearing. Our understanding is there's... I would say that the applicant wasn't particularly motivated at the time.
What institution lacks continuity is what I'd like to know. We've been here for... At least I have.
Commissioner Levin.
That teased out a number of the questions that I have, but I think we also need to go back to the Old Navy situation. How did this get built out as retail space in the first place? I mean, this is not for you to answer, but maybe we can work this all the way through when it comes back for the public hearing. What's the history here? Are we legalizing something that's been in place for a long time? Are we correcting an DOB interpretation? Who's got how much dirt on their hands here? And so forth. And I guess, and then I would ask you, because I know you've been in the trenches on the whole subject of the SoHo-NoHo rezoning anyway. Is there anything from that study that is relevant to our consideration of this application?
Right, so, thank you for the question. So, on the history side, I think the applicant attempted to do research in terms of when, how the building's tendencies changed over time. And they can speak to that more when it comes to hearing. One thing that the Commission should keep in mind is that, given the scope of the special permit, even though the applicant argues that the second-floor legalization is only 1/3 of increment, the large retail establishment special permit really asks the Commission to consider the entire establishment as a whole. So, I think it may give you a little bit more assurance that you can consider it more broadly than just the second-floor legalization. On the kind of findings through the SoHo engagement process that may be helpful in your consideration of the application, I would say that there is general consensus among stakeholders in SoHo that ground-floor retail uses, at least allowing a broader range of commercial uses on the ground floor in SoHo and NoHo, is something that warrants attention and could potentially be justified. And Broadway and/or certain areas in SoHo-NoHo may warrant additional attention in terms of that relaxation of ground-floor restriction, given the floor plates of buildings, sizes of buildings, historic use of buildings, and presence of, you know, historically established commercial corridors. Those may be factors that could be considered in thinking about the appropriate uses and sizes of commercial establishments in SoHo.
Okay. And Sylvia, with respect to the issuance of the report, we anticipate that that will occur before the end of this year, or...
The consultant is working very hard in finalizing the report so we can provide an update
That'll be helpful.
when we have a better understanding of the timeline. I wanted to add that we've heard loud and clear also from the community that in considering allowing broader range of uses, also thinking about how to address potential quality-of-life challenges in the area, given how intimately mixed-use SoHo is, is something that needs additional attention, which is relevant to this application.
Well, and that gets to... The other thing I wanted to ask about was exactly that, is this experience of store deliveries. I mean, the reality is that Zara is now there and operating. So, what's it like on Mercer Street at, you know, 1:00 AM when the truck from Spain comes twice a week? And I expect that the Community Board will fill us in on that, but that's going to be very important for us to understand here.
Yes, and I think, from our understanding and also in talking to SoHo Broadway Initiative, which is the bid that handles this area, sometimes is a matter of operation... Operational practices in terms of loading and unloading, and there are ways to mitigate potential disturbance.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Dweck.
Question. Can you clarify the opinion regarding the second cash register? That's a DOB opinion? Or it's a private opinion?
I don't want to speak for a DOB here, but our understanding is applicants, building owners, sometimes file retail establishments as smaller, separate establishments as they are serviced by separate cash registers. So, say, Baby Gap, Men's Gap, Women's Gap may be considered in certain situations and with certain filing categorizations as separate stores. Therefore, they don't count together as one single establishment, therefore, does not trigger the large retail special permit. But, again, this is kind of a DOB interpretation and probably made based on how uses are filed at the DOB.
What was driving this is that there were different requirements for under and over 10,000 square feet. And so, applicants obviously were incented to say these are separate retail establishments and so don't need a special permit. And again, we have been in discussions with DOB, and recently, DOB has begun issuing violations, as in this instance. Commissioner Marine.
I just have to ask the obvious. How do you delineate separate establishments on a plan? If I'm looking at one huge plan without walls, right? I'm physically looking at something that looks like one huge space. So, how do I determine that Baby Gap, Gap, or the other Old Navy that you mentioned, whatever it may be, that coexist in one store? How do I differentiate them as different stores, then? Is it just by cash register?
I don't think so. I can look into it more and provide clarification, but I would need to speak to people that are more familiar with DOB permitting practices.
It just sounds really counterintuitive. I mean, if there's not a... If I'm looking, again, if I'm the examiner and I'm looking at a plan, and there's no wall, I see this as one entire space. So, I'm a little bit not understanding how this...
Yeah, my understanding is that there should be separate entrances and should be walls separating. But I will provide more information as it comes back.
And again, I'll note that we're pleased with DOB's current approach of considering them as one store and thus leading to applications like this one for the special permit, because it does allow us, then, to have input. As Sylvia noted, throughout the SoHo-NoHo process, so much of the discussion was less about zoning and more about operational and quality-of-life issues and a tension that exists between DOT encouraging deliveries to occur at night to ease congestion on the streets. And yet, in a neighborhood like this, while Broadway itself is a major trucking route, the adjacent streets have a much more residential character, where one could imagine the 2:00 AM loading would be inconsistent with a more residential character. Isn't that what makes our lives interesting? Other questions? Okay, then this application is certified.
Thank you.
Item 5 on the agenda has been laid over. Item 6 on our agenda, page 187, is a certification of a zoning map amendment in Brooklyn Community District 14. Our presenter is Lilia Carrier.
Good afternoon. This is an application by Pulmonary and Sleep Medical for a zoning map amendment from an R-2 to R-32 district to facilitate the continued use of an existing medical office use at 2519 and 2523 Avenue O in Midwood, Community District 14, Brooklyn. The proposed project area was included in the 2006 Midwood rezoning, which changed the district in the project area from R-6 to R-2. The project area is located at 2513 through 2523 Avenue O in Midwood, Community District 14, Brooklyn. The project area is located on a portion of a tax block generally bounded by East 26th Street to the east, Bedford Avenue to the west, Avenue O to the south, and Avenue N to the north. The surrounding area is predominantly residential. To the north, there... To the north and south, there's R-2 and R-32 districts, To the north and south, there's R2 and R32 districts, which are characterized by low-scale one- and two-family detached and semi-detached homes. King's Highway, 140-foot wide corridor, is zoned R7A and characterized by mid-density residential buildings. There are community facilities in the surrounding area. Medical offices are represented by the blue dots on the map above, and the New York Community Hospital is directly across from the project area, also highlighted in blue on the map. The area is moderately served by transit and not within the transit zone. King's Highway's station on the B and Q lines is three-quarters of a mile southwest of the project area. The B7 and B82 buses stop one block south on King's Highway. The B44 local and select bus service stops four blocks east on Nostrand Avenue, and the B49 bus stops approximately six blocks west on Ocean Avenue. The project area consists of Block 76, 79, lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 at the corner of Avenue O and East 26th Street. The project area is approximately 10,000 square feet with 100-foot frontage on Avenue O and 100-foot frontage on East 26th Street. The project area consists of four tax lots and includes floor semi-detached houses. Lots 1 and 2 are applicant-owned, two-story semi-detached residential buildings built to an FAR of .49 and .40, respectively. Both have medical offices on the ground floor and residential on the second floor. Lot 3 is also applicant-owned and a semi-detached residential building built to an FAR of .50. Lot 4 is not applicant-owned, but a two-story semi-detached residential building with an FAR of .47. The proposed project site is Lot 1 and 2. Lot 1 is on the corner of Avenue O and 26th Street with an area of 2,500 square feet. Lot 2 is immediately adjacent to Lot 1 with an area of 2,450 square feet. The applicant purchased Lot 1 and 2 in 2013 and 2006, respectively, for medical office and residential use. The applicant maintains that the medical office use existed on the ground floor on both properties prior to being purchased by the applicant and prior to the 2006 rezoning, when the uses were allowed as of right under R6. There is no certificate of occupancy available for either lot. In order to facilitate improvements to the site and legalize the use group 4, the applicant is proposing a rezoning. The existing medical office uses will continue to occupy the ground floor, and the residential unit on the second floor will also continue. No expansions are planned for the proposed development. So the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to change the existing R2 zoning district to R32. The existing R2 contextual district permits single-family detached buildings with a residential FAR of .50, a community facility FAR of 1, and an open space ratio of .15, and a skyplane exposure starting at 25 feet above the front yard line. R2 districts permit use groups 1, and with restrictions, use groups 3 and 4. Use groups 4, ambulatory diagnostic and treatment, and treatment healthcare facilities are prohibited in R2. The proposed R32 contextual districts allow semi-detached and detached single- and two-family homes and small multifamily apartment buildings with a residential FAR of .50, community facility FAR of .1, 35% lot coverage, maximum perimeter wall of 21 feet, and a maximum building height of 35 feet. R32 districts permit use groups 1, 2, 3, and 4, allowing ambulatory diagnostic or treatment healthcare facilities to locate in these districts as of right. The requested zoning map amendment would legalize the existing medical offices. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions. Commissioner Levin.
So right now, are these, the medical offices are legal non-conforming?
They're illegal. There's no certificate of occupancy.
Okay. It's the absence of the certificate of occupancy that is the issue, not?
Well, they're also, they're not permitted within the zoning district either.
No, but they were permitted before.
Correct.
So had there been a certificate of occupancy that described it all properly, and the zoning changed out from underneath them, they would be able to continue to operate legally even, though it became non-conforming as a result of rezoning?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. But no certificate of occupancy, they've got an issue.
Was the medical use there at the time of the rezoning?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
So this isn't something that BSA could take care of? It has to go through an entire ULA to fix this problem?
So these, I was actually contacted about these properties when I was at the board, and they don't, on the face of them, have anything unique about the lots. They just have an existing non-legal use on the lots, so. And they hadn't, there wasn't anything for there to be any vesting for, because there was no C of O. If there'd been a C of O, and they had some question, there could have been a vesting provision, but without the C of O, there wasn't anything to do. Yeah, yeah, unfortunately.
Another question that I had is while we understand that the intent is to keep the existing buildings and uses, how much additional floor area potentially would be generated by the rezoning? It would be helpful to have that at the time of the hearing.
Okay. It's the same floor area for residential and community facility, and I can make sure the applicant talks to that.
Great.
Yeah.
Other questions? Vice Chair Knuckles.
I was just curious, going back to the pictures that you had, are those, is that the sole entrance for both the medical and the residential? Or are there separate entrances for the residential?
So there are rear entrances. I'm not sure which entrance is used for the residential, but we can get that clarified.
Thank you.
Other questions? The application is certified.
Item seven on the agenda, page 205, is a certification of a zoning map amendment in Queens, Community District 7. Our presenter is Hai Kang Yang.
I know. This is a private application from ADA 50 Management LLC, seeking a zoning map amendment to map a C12 commercial overlay in an existing R3A district in the Whitestone neighborhood of Queens, Community District 7. This project area is located south of the Cross Island Parkway and is zoned R3A. The 2005 Whitestone rezoning mapped C12, C13, and C22 commercial overlays along the commercial thoroughfare in the area to recognize pre-existing commercial uses and reinforce future commercial and mixed-use developments along corridors. The existing land use in the area is characterized by a mix of attached, detached, and semi-detached two- to three-story family houses with commercial uses north of Cross Island Parkway, and several pre-existing legal non-conforming commercial and retail uses along 149th Street. On Block 4645, which is to the north here, the establishment includes a cigar smoke shop, elevator service office, scrap material yard. Immediately north of the project site is a commercial overlay of C12 in an R3A zoning district, which is, you see the, here, approved by the Commission in 2011, which facilitates development of a one-story TD bank. And immediately south of the project site are community facilities, including PS79 and House of Worship. The area is substantially motor vehicle oriented, but well-served by the Q15 and Q76 bus lines, as well as QM2 and QM32 Service Express stops, located one block north of the project site. The proposed rezoning area consists of five lots on a single triangular block, Block 4646. Development site is located on Lot 8, and is improved with a two-story office building. Lot 10 is improved with a two-story two-family residential use. Lot 10 is not included in the proposed rezoning, but is considered a development site because lots 8 and 10 are considered a single zoning lot under DOB's records. The proposed commercial overlay is also over three other lots that face 149th Street. Lot 14 is improved with a gas station that contains a service building approximately 15 feet tall and with a 95-foot curb cut along 15th Avenue. This is a non-conforming use, which was granted by the BSA. Lot 12 contains approximately 4,000 square feet of lot area and is currently under construction with a two- and a half-story two-family residence. Lot 11 is improved with a two-story legal non-conforming eating and drinking establishment on the ground floor and residential use on the second floor. This is the view of the project site from 15th Avenue. The mobile gas station on the corner of 149th Street and 15th Avenue, adjacent to the project site, is to the right, and on the left you have Leola Italiana Restaurant, a pre-existing non-conforming eating and drinking establishment. On the left you see Lot 11, the pre-existing non-conforming use, a beer garden restaurant, and on the right, Lot 12, the residence under construction. The applicant is seeking this commercial overlay to bring into conformance the existing commercial use. The development site has historically been occupied with several commercial uses, including a kitchen design firm, a daycare center, which is a community facility in the basement, and a paint store. The applicant believes the proposed rezoning is consistent with the existing C12 commercial overlays in the project area, and believes this would permit local retail and office uses in an area that already contains such uses. In addition, the proposed action would serve to reduce the degree of nonconformance within the rezoning area. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Bernie.
So lots of non-conforming eating going on in this neighborhood. But why do we care? Why is this coming up now? It's been going on for a long time.
So the applicant came in to us about a year and a half ago because they had received a warning or a notice from the padlock division that they could not have this use or?
We have a padlock division? I haven't heard of that before.
Those from the DOB.
Oh, DOB again. That was causing problems.
Yes, yes. So they wanted to make sure that this did not happen again, and they had approached, used this approach as a ULA action to do a commercial overlay and zoning.
Okay. Padlock Division strikes again.
Or DOB as the ensuring full employment for the City Planning Commission. Commissioner Levin.
Well, then it does beg the question, though, why not go to the BSA? The gas station on the corner apparently went to BSA. How old is this building? How old is the commercial use in it? I think when it comes back, we need to know a lot more about the, sort of, the history of use here and why this is the appropriate way to go.
Got it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you. Application certified. Thank you.
Item eight on the agenda, page 217, is a certification of zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens, Community District 1. Our presenter is Blake Montieth.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application to facilitate the development of a new mixed residential, commercial, and community facility building in Astoria, Community District 1, Queens. The owner of a development site at 2260 46th Street is jointly applying with the Pan Cyprian Association, a local theater group, to rezone one block on Did Mars Boulevard from a light industrial M11 district and a lower-density residential R4 district to R6A and R4 with a C23 commercial overlay on the southern portion of the block. They're also applying to map a new mandatory inclusionary housing area over a portion of the rezoning area. The requested actions would allow for two new eight-story buildings. Building A would face 46th Street, and Building B would face 45th Street. The buildings would have about 136 total residential units, including about 41 affordable units. These buildings would also include a 250-seat theater in the cellar. The rezoning area is located on the south side of Did Mars Boulevard between 45th Street and 46th Streets, north of the Grand Central Parkway, and northwest of St. Michael's Cemetery. The Astoria, Did Mars, and N.W. Station is about a 15- to 20-minute walk from the rezoning area. The development site is shown here in red. The surrounding area is predominantly a residential neighborhood with a small cluster of commercial and light industrial uses around the rezoning area. The rezoning area includes the entirety of Block 769, outlined here in a dotted black line. A six-story, 70-foot-tall condominium building and accessory parking deck occupy the northern half of the block. The community board's office is also in this building. The city approved a zoning change from M11 to R4 in 1998 to facilitate the conversion of a former warehouse. It was the Steinway Piano, or a warehouse for the Steinway Piano Factory, to convert it from that factory to a residential use. This building is now known as the Pistilly Manor and includes about 201 condominium units. The building was legally converted, but is currently overbuilt under the current zoning and would be overbuilt under the proposed zoning. The development site is a through-block site in the mid-block, just south of the Pistilly Manor parking garage, and it currently includes the applicant's office and warehouse facing 46th Street and a plumbing supply store facing 45th Street. The remainder of the block, the southern portion of the block, includes one- and two-story residential buildings and a one-story commercial building. The area surrounding the rezoning area is mostly residential, with two- and three-story attached residential buildings, as shown here on the left. And this is an example, just north of the site, one block north. Did Mars Boulevard, shown here on the right, includes a mix of residential, commercial, and community facility uses. LaGuardia Shopping Center, shown here on the left, is located one block west of the rezoning area, across 45th Street. It includes neighborhood-serving businesses, like a grocery store, restaurants, and a gym. And then you can see on the right, a new self-storage facility that opened recently on 46th, or across 46th Street from the rezoning area. The primary residential lobby for these buildings would be in Building B on 45th Street. The theater would be located below grade and would be accessible from 46th Street. And a parking garage with about 105 accessory spaces would have a curb cut on 46th Street. The applicants intend to provide a roof terrace on the second floor of the building connecting these two buildings. The applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to map R6A on the northern portion of the block, including the Pistilly Manor site and the development site. The remaining portion of the block would be rezoned from M11 to R4, and a C23 commercial overlay would be mapped on the southeastern corner of the block along 45th Street to ensure that current commercial buildings would be able to continue to operate. The applicant states that the proposed zoning strategy is a rational approach to land use in the area, with higher density fronting Did Mars Boulevard, with a step down to the lower-scale neighborhood to the south. With the requested actions, the applicant is also required to map a new mandatory inclusionary housing area over a portion of the rezoning area. MIH would only be applied to the R6A portion of the rezoning area, because MIH is not available in R4 districts. The applicant seeks to allow for MIH option 2 and the workforce option over this area that's highlighted here, though they intend to pursue the workforce option for their proposed development. The workforce option requires that 30% of the residential floor area be reserved for permanently affordable housing, for an average of household incomes at 115% of area median income, or this is equivalent to about $110,000 for a three-person family in 2019. By comparison, the Queens Community District 1 median household income is equivalent to about 62% of area median income. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Levin.
Well, thank you, Blake, particularly for that last slide, the one before this one, which really begs the question of why the workforce option when area need seems to be at a significantly lower point. I mean, it's roughly, they're proposing incomes that are basically double the area median income, and I wonder why that makes sense.
Sure.
I don't expect you to have an answer to that.
I can ask the applicant to answer that at the public hearing, but thank you for your question.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yeah, thank you. It's a little bit thin on design information. Does the applicant have more? It'd be nice to see what's really going on at street level, a little bit more information about the facades, how excesses gain to the rear open space and so on.
Sure, we can provide that.
Thanks.
Although I'll note on this that this is just a clean zoning change, a zoning map amendment, and so any illustrations would be for illustrative purposes only, rather than binding.
I know. You tried to explain that point to me, didn't you?
It's a hard one for all of us to wrap our heads around. Other questions? Okay, the application is certified.
Thank you.
Item nine on the agenda, page 252, is a pre-hearing review of a site selection and acquisition in Queens, Community District 1. Our presenter is Raphael Burgess.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application for a site selection and acquisition by the NYC Fire Department and Department of Citywide Administrative Services. They're seeking the site selection of a 22,000-square-foot portion of a privately-owned lot located in 1940 42nd Street, Astoria, Queens, Community District 1. And they're seeking this for the purpose of relocating an existing FDNY EMS station, So the existing EMS station, 49, is located near Astoria Park and situated underneath the entrance to the Tri-Borough Bridge. Their proposed site is located to the north, within the Astoria Industrial Business Zone. This is an image of their existing EMS station. The fire department is using this space under the terms of memorandum of understanding they have with the Department of Parks and Recreation. This MOU expired in 2016, and the fire department is now seeking a permanent location for their EMS station. The fire department has also cited several reasons for why their current site is substandard, including lack of storage and office space, constant noise from the freeway above them, and birds roosting above them has become a health hazard for staff. So the proposed project area is in an M11 zoning district, and like I said before, it's within the Astoria Industrial Business Zone. The development site, shown here, is a 22,000-square-foot portion of an existing 100,000-square-foot building, and the surrounding land uses are mostly industrial manufacturing, parking facilities, and residential, all characterized by one-to-two-story buildings. So these are some existing photos of their proposed site. So there's currently a two-story brick building on the development site that was built in 1986. The FDNY is planning to do an interior renovation using the, so in the image on the top right, they're planning to use those existing entry bays and doing an interior renovation that would include space for parking, decontamination area, and a mezzanine level for offices and locker rooms. So this application was certified on May 6. The public hearing for the Queens Community Board 1 was on June 18. On June 25, they voted to approve unanimously, 32 in favor, and the Queensborough President voted to approve on July 22. And so this is scheduled for a public hearing on August 28, Wednesday. Thank you.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Could you go back to the aerial shot that I think was the first one?
Aerial.
What's the approximate mileage, distance between the proposed site and the existing site?
I can confirm that for you. I'm not sure offhand.
Are there any service implications to this? I mean, since they're going, they're relocating what looks to be a substantial distance from where they currently are.
Right.
What's the other, what's the nearest pre-existing EMS elsewhere in that area? I'm just interested whether or not there's a service impact here.
So I wasn't planning to talk about this, but I do have an image that shows the way the EMS station, how their, sort of, servicing works. This EMS station is not where the cars would be reporting from. They actually park in the locations that you see on this map, and then they report to emergencies from these locations. So this kind of shows their catchment area is what they call it.
But they’re distributed across the?
Yes, exactly. So this EMS station is mainly used to park the vehicles and sort of when they’re not on duty, essentially.
All right, that’s clarifying. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we’ll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thanks.
Item 10 on the agenda, page 257, is a pre-hearing review of a special permit in Queens Community District 1. Our presenter is Blake Montieth. Commissioner Ron Pishat is recused.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a private application to allow for large retail establishments in an existing commercial shopping center in Astoria, Community District 1, Queens. The owner of a development site at 4710 48th Street is applying for a special permit to allow large retail establishments for an existing one-story commercial shopping center in an M1 zoning district. The project area is located on 48th Street, south of Northern Boulevard, northeast of Sunnyside Yard, and between the neighborhoods of Astoria and Sunnyside. The shopping center is shown here in red and is surrounded by other big-box retail uses as well as automotive sales lots and light industrial buildings. A large house of worship is located southwest of the shopping center, and the Long Island Railroad and Amtrak tracks are located further south. The Plaza 48 zoning lot includes three buildings. Building 1 was the subject of two previous special permits by the commission. In 1999, the commission granted a special permit allowing large retail establishments in Building 1, shown here in red, but the city council modified the special permit to not allow department stores or variety stores. A new special permit was subsequently granted in 2013 that now allows for department stores and variety stores in Building 1 but does not cover Building 2. The applicant now seeks a new special permit to cover both Buildings 1 and 2. Building 2, shown here on the right, was previously occupied by Toys R Us and Babies R Us. Toys R Us closed its stores nationwide in 2018, and the vacancy of Building 2 was the impetus for the applicant applying for this special permit because the applicant is unable to find suitable tenants that would be allowed as of right under the zoning resolution to fill this large space. The applicant hopes to lease this space to another large retail establishment. As a requirement of the special permit, the applicant would be required to update the parking lot layout to comply with the city’s most up-to-date parking layout standards. Their proposed parking lot would include 457 parking spaces with bike racks, 41 new trees, new planted medians, and new striping. On May 23, Queens Community Board 1 voted to approve the application on the condition that the Department of Transportation conduct a traffic study of the impact of new large retail tenants on nearby intersections, and with the condition that the applicant provide personnel to direct traffic during peak hours and peak shopping seasons. And on July 22, the Queensborough president recommended approval of the application with no conditions. Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Okay, we’ll see this on Wednesday at the public hearing.
Item 11 on the agenda, page 277, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Queens Community District 1, and Blake will present.
This is a private application to facilitate the development of a new mixed residential and commercial building in Astoria, Community District 1, Queens. The owner of a development site at 4401 Northern Boulevard is applying to rezone one Northern Boulevard block front from a light industrial M11 district to R7X and R6B with a C24 commercial overlay. They’re also applying to map a new mandatory inclusionary housing area over the rezoning area. The requested actions would allow for a new 10-story building with about 335 total residential units, including about 100 affordable units, and a large retail space on the ground floor for the applicant’s automotive showroom. The rezoning area is located on Northern Boulevard between 44th and 45th Streets, northeast of Sunnyside Yard, and southwest of the Woodside Houses Nycha Campus. The Steinway Street M&amp;R subway station is about a five-to-10-minute walk away. The development site is shown here in red. Northern Boulevard is a wide street as defined by the zoning resolution. Automotive, light industrial, and big-box retail uses are concentrated along this portion of Northern Boulevard. An established medium-density residential neighborhood is also located to the north of this rezoning area. Looking at the rezoning area from Northern Boulevard, the development site is currently occupied by three one- and two-story commercial buildings. The applicant uses these buildings for automotive sales and repair. The proposed building would rise to a height of 10 stories along Northern Boulevard and would step down contextually to the north to four stories. A maximum height of 145 feet, or about 14 stories, would be allowed in the proposed R7X district. The applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to replace a current M11 district on the southern portion of Block 704 with a higher-density R7X district along Northern Boulevard. This application would also extend an existing R6B district that’s mapped along 35th Avenue to the north of the block, south to cover the remaining portion of the development site. A C24 commercial overlay would be mapped at a depth of 150 feet from Northern Boulevard, allowing the applicant to include an automotive sales showroom on the ground floor. With the requested actions, the applicant is also required to map a new mandatory inclusionary housing area over the rezoning area. The applicant seeks to allow for Options 1 and 2 on this MIH area, though the applicant intends to pursue Option 2. At certification, there was a question about incomes associated with four-person families. In 2019, 80% of area median income, as required under Option 2 as the average of incomes, is equivalent to about $85,000 for a four-person family. Queens Community Board 1 voted in favor of the application on the condition that the applicant work with the Department of Housing, Preservation, and Development to build the development under MIH Option 1. The Queensborough president similarly approved the, or recommended approval of the application, and similarly with the condition that the applicant seek a lower-income affordability levels for the development, but also that the applicant work with building trades and labor unions to reach an agreement on hiring for the construction and operation of the proposed building. Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Okay, we’ll see it at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Item 12, page 306, is a pre-hearing review of a special permit in Brooklyn, Community District 3. Our presenter is Karina Liang.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So this is a private application, coming back for a pre-hearing, for a special permit pursuant to Section 7486 of the zoning resolution, and this would legalize an accessory outdoor swimming pool at 1247 Atlantic Avenue in Bedford-Stuyvesant, Community District 3 in Brooklyn. As a reminder, the project’s in the southwestern part of the community district, and the development site is located on Atlantic, just east of Nostrand. Atlantic is a heavy commercial and light industrial corridor. Nostrand is a commercial corridor, and north of the site, you have a medium-density residential use district. These are views of the development site along from Atlantic, and again, along Nostrand and Herkimer. As a reminder, the development site is an irregular lot with a 10-story mixed-use building on the portion that fronts on Atlantic, and then the pool is on the northern portion, which is shaded in blue. So this plan shows the 13-by-35-foot pool and 11-by-8-foot spot that have already been constructed, and then you can also see the screening that is proposed by, as part of this application, which includes an eight-foot-tall opaque wooden fence around the lot line and a six-foot-tall semi-open fence between the pool area and the rest of the development site. These are illustrative renderings of the proposed screening. As a reminder, the special permit pursuant to Section 7486 requires the commission to find that both the location of the pool does not impair the residential character of a neighborhood and that there is a suitable buffer around the pool. So for this current application, the applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 7486 to reduce the required distance between a pool and a lot line in order to facilitate the legalization of a pool and spa that is located six feet from the side lot lines and 1'7" from the northernmost lot line of the development site. When this application was in public review, Community Board 3 recommended approving with a vote of 20 in favor, nine against, and one member abstaining, and the borough president recommended approval as well. I’ll now take any questions you have.
Commissioner Sorolo.
I’m just wondering if we take the report as being factually correct, which we do, it does give us a sense that the developer mistakenly, with some approval, at part of the process from the Department of Health and Mental Health, thought they had approval for the pool, but of course didn’t get the approval from us, that’s required, and it wasn’t until buildings identified what was missing that this became an issue. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And had DOB permits? So what?
That was the paddle-up division, wasn’t it?
So just given that sort of backstory on this and the fact pattern, I’m just wondering, and I don’t usually ask this question when we see the community boards, you know, this one voted no and that one voted yes, but a third of the community board that was present to vote voted no, or is recorded as no, nine plus one abstention. Was it about the process? Is it about the substance and the pool being there? Do we know what the, because there isn’t anything in any detail that indicates like the discussion about what created that outcome?
Yeah, I spoke with the district manager about what the community board was feeling. He communicated that there was some concern about possible noise impact, but generally there was, those who voted against, you know, didn’t feel comfortable with legalizing something they felt that the applicant should have known better. They should have, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And I’ll ask the applicant to speak to this further.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. Two observations from the borough president’s recommendation. One, the Brooklyn BP recommends that we relax the existing setback requirements for pools.
I’m sorry, can you repeat your question?
The Brooklyn Borough President recommends that we relax the existing yard setback requirements to facilitate the creation of more pools on smaller lots, and that’s one observation. And a question, they had commented about the closing hours of the pool being, I think it’s listed at 7:00 PM, and they were asking if the applicant would be willing to expand the hours a little bit later.
I will ask the applicant to speak to that. I know that’s not something that’s included in the special permit approval.
But if the applicant could just?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Respect to the borough president’s recommendation that, basically, we changed the rules so you don’t need the special permit. We keep a running list of zoning provisions that appear to have outlived their usefulness. And, you know, if it were simple enough that the department itself could get rid of it, I think we might do it. Going through a ULP for that, it would likely be as part of a broader package of cleanup actions.
Last observation, checking the weather forecast, a site visit might be warranted.
After 7:00 PM. Okay, Commissioner Levin.
Well, related to that, I’m wondering, the pool’s already been built. Has it been operational this summer? And if so, are there quality-of-life issues that have been expressed based on real experience or just fears about what might happen?
So, I guess to start with, so to my knowledge, the pool has not been operational. DOB said they would issue a TCO without excluding the use of the pool until this permit was issued.
Okay. Because I can imagine that there are real quality-of-life issues having an active, I mean, people frolicking in a pool in a residential area like this. This does seem to be a fairly narrow-lap pool, so maybe it doesn’t lend itself to those issues, but I think we have to be sensitive to them.
Those are some questions that we can place to the applicant on Wednesday. Other questions or comments? Okay, then we will see the first pool special permit in memory at the public hearing on
Item 13, page 325, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn, Community District 2. Our presenter is Anthony Grande.
Good afternoon. This is a private application by Fleet Center, Inc. for zoning map and text amendments to facilitate the development of a new 14-story, approximately 205,000-square-foot, commercial office building at 101 Fleet Place in downtown Brooklyn. The project area is located in the downtown Brooklyn area of Brooklyn, Community District 2. The proposed project area is a rectangular area fronting on the mid-block portion of the east side of Fleet Place between Willoughby Street and Myrtle Avenue. The project area contains the proposed development site and approximately 20,000-square-foot site, which contains a one-story brick building with an early childhood education facility providing pre-K services. The project area is within an existing R6 district with adjacent R71 to the north and a C64 district across the street to the west. The surrounding area generally has a mixed character, so generally to the west is a high-density commercial and mixed-use area of downtown Brooklyn, which generally contains high-rise commercial office buildings and mixed-use buildings with residential developments. To the east of the project area is generally a medium-density, primarily residential area, including university towers, which are on the same block directly to the south and the east. The surrounding area contains the Metro Tech Campus and City Point, both just to the west across Flatbush Avenue Extension, and Long Island University. The area is well-served by transit. Three subway stations serving 10 different subway lines are located within a 10-minute walk from the project area. This photo shows the project area from the street level. We can see the development site with the one-story brick building in the center. And then in this view, facing south, you see the project area as well, as well as the, one of the university towers in the back there. Also, note that the street widens from 50 feet to 60 feet near the northern edge of this property. The proposed developments would be a new 14-story, approximately 205,000-square-foot commercial office building with a total FAR of 10. While the building is designed as an office building, the applicant has expressed that the ground floor space could also be used for retail as well. The first two floors of the proposed building would be recessed at the street level to provide additional space in front of the building’s entryway. The street wall on floors three through six would butt the street line, and then above the sixth floor, there would be a 20-foot setback, after which the building would rise to 14 floors for a total height of 196 feet. One loading berth would be required by the district regulations in the proposed C64 district. In the illustrative plan, this is shown in the northern edge of the building. So in order to facilitate the proposed developments, the applicant requests two actions. First is a zoning map amendment. The project area is proposed to be changed from an R6 to a C64 district, essentially extending the existing district from across the street to cover the project area. The proposed zoning map would also reflect the expansion of the special downtown Brooklyn district, which is denoted by the area shaded in gray on the zoning map. Second, the applicant seeks zoning text amendments to two separate sections in the zoning resolution. First on the left is an example of one of the seven maps, which define the boundary of the special downtown Brooklyn district. All seven of these maps would be amended to include the project area. And on map six here, we can see that the 400-foot height limitation area, which is adjacent across the street, is also shown being moved across the street to cover the project area. On the right, in Appendix F, the text amendment would create an On the right, the, in Appendix F, the text amendment would create an MIH area over the project area, mapping options one and two. So the application was certified on June 17th and referred to Community Board Two and the Borough President. So Brooklyn Community Board Two had authorized its executive committee to act on its behalf during the summer. Subsequently, the Landes Committee voted, held a meeting and voted 10 in favor, zero opposed, to recommend approval of the application, and such recommendation was sent to the executive committee, which then voted seven in favor with one abstention to approve the application. The Brooklyn Borough President submitted a recommendation to disapprove with a list of conditions. So firstly, the recommendation is to modify the zoning district to a C61 rather than the proposed C64. So this is essentially a lower-density version of a similar district. So rather than a commercial FAR of 10, this district would have an FAR of 6. And then on the residential side, rather than an FAR of 12 with MIH, this district would have an FAR of 4.6. The recommendation also mentioned modifying the district boundaries. So this would be essentially moving the district in by 25 feet on the southern and the eastern edges, which would essentially limit the amount of floor area that would be generated, potentially could be generated on the adjacent lots through this rezoning. The Borough President also mentioned a recommendation for Department of City Planning to undertake a zoning text amendments, which would exempt up to 50,000 square feet of floor air for school at the 101 Fleet Place site. The further recommendations are directed towards City Council, but they essentially state that if a C64 district were to be approved, the Borough President would like a legal mechanism to limit the building to commercial and community facility use, and essentially not allowing that residential alternative while requiring 15% of the building to be community facility. And then further requiring the community facility space or a portion of the space to be accommodated with the existing daycare facility, and then further requirements about affordable medical space, nonprofit arts and cultural space, and then finally the resiliency and sustainability measures and requirements for Brooklyn-based contractors. With that, I'll take questions.
Anthony, could you once more go through what the applicant has proposed for its commercial FAR and the residential so that we can dimension the changes proposed by the Borough President?
Yeah, sure. So the proposed C64 district would allow 10 FAR of commercial, and the C61 district would be six, so it's a reduction of 10 to six. On the residential side, the proposed C64 district would allow 12 FAR with MIH, which this area would be an MIH area. So the C61 district would be 4.6 FAR, so that's a reduction from 12 to 4.6.
Questions? Commissioner Dweck.
Did the applicant get back to us on the BP's recommendations?
They'll be addressing the comments on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
How do we feel about the BP's recommendations? Are they rational?
Well, I think, you know, this is responding to some of the concerns about, you know, the density at this site. The other, you know, the other lots on this block are zoned R6 and R71, which are, you know, much lower density than the C64. So, you know, I think it's responding to that concern, which, you know, I think we take seriously as well. And this is a narrow street, like we saw in the photo. Most of this street is only built to 50 feet wide, and so, you know, that does impose another constraint to, you know, this additional density.
I'll note that we were pleased to see a proposal come in for an entirely commercial building that's consistent with the evolution that we'd like to see, but the change in the zoning district would not require, it could go forward under a residential option. Shortly after our certification, there was an article in the Brooklyn Paper basically saying, why did city planning kill having a school here? And we just want to make clear that our concern was not about the school, but the amount of density on top of the school that had been proposed. We also note that we're not the ones who determine where schools go, that that is the school construction authority, but we do share concerns about the proposed density. We think it's a site that can take a significant building, would like to see a commercial building here in the heart of downtown. I would note the changes proposed by the Borough President would be a very fundamental recasting of the economics of the building.
I want to ask the applicant to speak to this, but is it generally the case that the market requires more density to make commercial work? Is that why?
Yeah, I think the applicant can speak to the economics.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, I guess, these are, this echoes concerns that I had about this project at certification, and I just want to be out here saying, it's not just the Borough President who's worried about this stuff, and I look forward to the discussion on Wednesday. It remains a concern that I have. And, you know, the argument is made by the applicant that this is in the heart of the downtown Brooklyn Commercial District, but in fact, it's right on the edge, and it butts, it currently is in a residential district, and I think we have to be mindful of those edge conditions.
Other comments? Well, this will be the subject of a lively public hearing on Wednesday.
Item 14, page 375, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Manhattan Community District Seven. Our presenter is Nabilah Malik.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application by CPW Retail South LLC for a zoning map amendment to add a C25 commercial overlay to an existing R10A district along Central Park West, between West 62nd and 63rd Streets, at 25 Central Park West, a landmarked mixed-use building constructed in 1931. The proposed C25 overlay would bring three existing legal non-conforming commercial units on the ground floor into conformance and allow for the applicant to apply for a special permit with the BSA for a physical culture establishment, PCE, for one of the commercial units. This project was certified on May 20th, and it's back for a pre-hearing review. The development site outlined in red is an existing 33-story landmarked mixed-use building known as the Century. The site is currently zoned R10A with a small portion on its western end zoned C47, and that portion is located within the special Lincoln Square district. The proposed rezoning area in the black dotted line encompasses a portion of the existing R10A district to a depth of 100 feet. 25 Central Park West is the southernmost building within the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, and the surrounding area contains a mix of residential office, hotel, retail, and community facility uses. These photos feature views of the existing 33-story building from West 63rd Street. Two of the three ground-floor commercial spaces are located along 63rd Street, and you can see the corner entrance to one of the commercial units on photo number six. These are views of the building frontage from Central Park West. You can see the corner entrance for the third commercial unit in picture nine. The development site at 25 Central Park West is an approximately 556,000-square-foot building that contains 422 dwelling units on floors two to 33, and three commercial units, and 13 use group four medical offices on the ground floor. The proposed rezoning will bring the existing legal non-conforming commercial units into conformance and will allow for the applicant to apply for a PCE special permit with a BSA for one of the commercial spaces. The proposed PCE would potentially occupy the southeastern commercial unit at the corner of Central Park West and 62nd Street. The proposed C25 overlay would be mapped for a depth of 100 feet along Central Park West, between 62nd and 63rd Streets. The commercial uses on the proposed development site are local retail and personal service uses that primarily serve the local residential area. The proposed overlay would in general permit a wider range of service uses and home maintenance establishments. The maximum permitted commercial FAR within the overlay C25 district is 2.0, and the C47 portion of the site would remain unaffected. The applicant seeks a zoning map amendment to add a C25 overlay to an existing R10A zoning district. The applicant has asserted that a C25 overlay at this location would transition the intensive commercial uses of Eighth Avenue and Columbus Circle to the primarily residential character of Central Park West north of the development site and bring longstanding commercial uses into conformance. CB7 voted to disapprove the project due to concerns that the commercial overlay would set a dangerous precedent for Central Park West, which, except for this project site, does not have commercial uses. The community board was also concerned that there's a risk of undesirable commercial uses being located in the building since there's no assurance that the commercial unit will have a yoga studio, which is what the applicant has proposed to pursue through the PCE. And on August 23rd, the Borough President recommended to approve the application with the following conditions: to ensure storefront activation through design and programming, and to work with tenants when making any changes to the commercial units. Thank you.
Any questions from the Commission? Okay, then we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Item 15, page 394, is a pre-hearing review of a special permit in Manhattan Community District Two. Our presenter is Sylvia Lee.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. This is a private application for a landmark preservation special permit returning to the Commission for a public hearing on Wednesday. The application requests to modify the use and bulk regulations of the M15B district to facilitate the construction of a new eight-story commercial building and the restoration of a three-story federal house, both shown on the rendering here, and to allow retail use below the level of second story in both buildings on the property located at 419 Broadway within the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, Manhattan Community District Two. The project site is located at the northwestern corner of Broadway and Canal Street, shown here on the slide. Manhattan Community Board Two recommended disapproval with the conditions, which I'll discuss after a brief overview of the project. We're still waiting for the Manhattan Borough President's recommendation. This is a photo of the existing condition of the site. As you may recall, it's currently occupied by three existing buildings. The historic row house facing Broadway to remain and restored, to be restored, and the one-story commercial building and two-story vacant office buildings to be demolished make way for the proposed new development. Also to point out, there is a subway entrance on Canal Street in front of the project site. The project site is located on the southern edge of the M15B district in Soho. The M15B district permits light industrial commercial uses as a right. Up to five FAR and use group six retail uses are not permitted below the level of second story. Building bulk is governed by maximum street wall height, setback distance, and sky exposure plane. Shown here is the zoning lot site plan. The project site is an irregular corner lot, fronting on both White Streets, Canal Street, and Broadway Street, Broadway, sorry. It has approximately 77 feet of frontage on Canal and 79 feet of frontage on Broadway, with a total lot area of 6,090 square feet. As proposed, the project site will contain a total of approximately 30,500 square feet of commercial floor area, which is five FAR maximum permitted. The historic row house to remain was constructed in 1823. According to the applicant, historically, the building has housed ground-floor retail uses and office above without a certificate of occupancy. The building will be restored as part of the special permit pursuant to the relevant LPC approvals. As shown on the elevations of the proposed building, contrary to the M15B bulk regulations, the proposed new commercial building would rise without setback above the maximum allowable street wall height of 85 feet to a height of 115 feet along both the Broadway and Canal Street frontages. The neighborhood character diagrams of both sides of Broadway and Canal Street show that the proposed building, as approved by the LPC, is in keeping with the surrounding context. To facilitate the proposed project, the applicant seeks bulk waivers above the maximum base height and within the initial 15-feet setback area from Broadway and Canal Street, shown here in yellow highlighted area. The proposed waivers would allow the building to take a form more consistent with the loft-style buildings in the historic district. The applicant also seeks a use waiver to allow use group six retail and office uses below the level of second story in both buildings, shown here in blue. Specifically, the ground floors of the historic building and the new building would be connected internally and primarily occupied by retail uses. A small office entrance and access area located on Canal Street would be provided. Cellar would be shared between use group six office and retail uses, as well as accessory uses for the building. Conditions and findings of the special permit are listed on this slide. Note that the applicant has obtained all the necessary LPC approvals, and the statement of findings is included in your briefing packages. Community Board Two recommended denial of the application with conditions, specifically a recommended denial of the retail use waiver unless the applicant agrees to insert provisions related to deliveries, signage in the retail leases, and the denial of the bulk waivers unless the applicant work with the MTA to see that an entrance is incorporated into the building. The applicant will provide a response to these conditions at the hearing on Wednesday. We will share the Manhattan Borough President's recommendations upon receipt. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you. But when we saw this last time, we did have a discussion about the idea of incorporating the subway entrance into the building. Did that get back to the applicant, and did they respond at all?
Right, so the applicant will respond to the specific challenges with regards to the site conditions and design to incorporate a subway entrance. I'll note here that, given the scope of the special permit application, and strictly speaking zoning-wise, there's no obvious nexus requiring an MTA entrance on the project site. Yeah, there's no necessary nexus between that and the intent of the landmark preservation special permit, which is facilitating and encouraging the restoration and preservation of an historic building. And then from a land use perspective, environmental perspective, the uses proposed on the development site, you know, are modest in scale and consistent with the surrounding character. You know, for instance, the proposed development doesn't draw a huge amount of additional traffic and visitation to the area to warrant mitigation such as providing additional subway entrances.
I'll note that the department always starts with the supposition that we'll look for opportunities to provide ADA accessibility or incorporation into buildings, particularly in locations like this that are already crowded, but when looking, as Sylvia said, when looking at the scope of the waivers, and the scope of the waivers are actually to make the building more consistent with the loft character, and the fact that it is a small building that is not in any way bonusable, we rather reluctantly came to the conclusion that this wasn't one that could carry the cost of it.
It's also very expensive business putting the, I mean, it's nice to do it, but it's not done cheaply.
Right, and I think such opportunities have to be identified very, very early on in the planning and development of a project. I think for these type of applications in terms of I think for these type of applications in terms of our Landmark Preservation Special Permit, by the time the applicant comes to us, they've already had pretty extensive conversations with the LPC, so their challenges, you know, are presented in this particular case.
Other question, oh, Commissioner Romper.
Yes, I have a question with regards to the cellar plan.
Yeah.
If you can go to it for one second. Are those supposed to be offices, those rooms?
My understanding is, one, the internal partitions are always illustrative on our plans, but those are intended to be storage spaces for tenants, both retail and office tenants.
My second question is, when you have occupancy in the cellar, they're supposed to have two means of egress. So I only see one, unless I'm not seeing something. Can you just clarify whether or not they're going to provide a second means of egress or they don't need it?
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll ask the applicant to be prepared for both of those questions. Other questions? Okay, we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Item 16, page 425, is a pre-hearing review of an acquisition, UDAP designation, and project for approval and disposition of city-owned property in Manhattan Community District 10. Annie White is our presenter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD, for the acquisition and disposition of three tax lots in Central Harlem, Manhattan Community Board 10. Approval of these actions would help facilitate the construction of two new buildings with 52 affordable homeownership units between them. The two sites are located at 207, 209 West 140th Street and 304 West 150th Street. And just to reiterate, HPD is requesting two actions: first, the acquisition of real property by the city, and second, the UDAP designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property. So the development sites comprise of two tax lots: one on 140th Street between Adam Clayton Powell Boulevard and Frederick Douglass Boulevard, and one lot on West 150th Street between Frederick Douglass Boulevard and Bradhurst Avenue. The two sites are about 10 blocks away from each other and in the north-central section of Harlem. The West 140th Street development site is zoned R-72, which is a height factor district with a maximum residential floor area of 3.44. The West 150th Street's development site is zoned R-8, which is a height factor district with a maximum residential FAR of 6.02. This is an image of the 140th Street development site. It's currently vacant and underdeveloped lot. This 140th Street is a narrow street lined with five-story residential buildings with seven-story residential buildings at the corners. Similarly, the West 150th Street development site is also underdeveloped. 150th Street is also a narrow street with five-to-seven-story residential buildings. It's a short block that terminates at the Jackie Robinson Park. This is an image of the proposed development on the West 140th Street site, which would be a six-story building and approximately 55 feet tall, matching the scale of the block. Be approximately 19,000 square feet with an FAR of 3.41. There would be 21 homeownership units in total, which would be a mix of one- and two-bedroom units. The units would be developed under HPD's Open Door Program and offered for sale at below-market prices to households earning 80% to 90% of area median income, or AMI. The proposed development on West 150th Street would be 12 stories and approximately 113 feet tall. The new building would be 31,000 square feet approximately. After the development site is conveyed, NME proposes combining the lot with the adjoining parcel that they also own to form one zoning lot. The zoning lot would have a maximum FAR of 5.19. There would be 31 units in the new building, which would likely be a mix of studios, one, two, and three-bedroom units. The units would also be offered at a sale below market, at below-market rate to households earning 80% to 90% of the AMI. At its full board meeting on June 5th, Manhattan Community Board 10 adopted a resolution recommending denial of the application, with 12 in favor of the application, 17 opposed, and two abstaining. On August 21st, the Manhattan Borough President submitted a letter recommending approval of the application. And this concludes my presentation. Happy to answer questions.
The one thing I just want to clarify is that it's a little bit confusing because rather than voting on the application, sometimes the vote is a vote on denying the application. But in this instance, 17 community board members were opposed to the application, 12 supported the application. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Do you know the rationale for the board's disapproval?
I wasn't there. This was when Joe was the project manager for this. It's my understanding that the land use committee actually approved it, and then when it went to the full board, it was denied. And I believe the primary concern was regarding the affordability mix and whether, that they, there was a belief that the AMIs were too low and wanting more community benefit.
That the AMIs were?
Were, or, sorry, were not low enough, that they wanted a lower level of affordability for the homeownership units.
Commissioner Marine.
I have a question regarding the lots. I mean, they are underdeveloped, but they do show to be some sort of open space. Were these part of open space requirements under a prior development for a regulatory agreement at some point or the other, or they were just sitting around and someone fenced them off?
I don't believe there was any prior regulatory agreement. I know that the history that these were intended to be developed under a previous action, but I do know that they have been closed off. They aren't used as active or passive open space, and there wasn't a concerned voice from the community that I could see that they wanted to keep these as open spaces.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
Hi, thank you. I'd commented the last time we saw this on the sort of striking difference between the two sites. So 140th Street, if you look at that one, I mean, contextual building, following the cornice line, some attempt to reflect the fenestration patterns of the adjacent buildings. And then you get to 150th Street, and it's right out of the sort of sore thumb school of architecture. No attempt to be contextual, not following the cornice line, vertical emphasis, and it's the same architect. So did that message come and get back to them, and have they decided to reconsider?
The applicant team will be here on Wednesday and I think can more adequately respond to the kind of architectural considerations of this property. I'm not sure. I do know that, you know, for this, the project on 150th Street, it is a higher FAR, that they're not even building up to the maximum allowable FAR on this site, but that might have something to do with the increased height and apparent density on this site.
Other questions? We'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday, but if people, other commissioners are scratching their heads saying, "Why is Annie here talking to us about Upper Manhattan and not Hudson Yards?", it's because Annie has received a promotion and she is now a team leader for Upper Manhattan.
Yes, thank you, thank you. I'm sure you were all, yeah, sick of listening to me talk about Hudson Boulevard and Park, but there might be.
Item 17, page 468, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments and special permits in Manhattan Community District 10, and Annie will present again.
Another one that I've taken over for my former colleague Joe is this application by the La Hermosa Christian Church for four separate actions: approval which would facilitate the construction of a new 33-story mixed-use complex in Manhattan Community Board 10. The applicant, La Hermosa Christian Church, is the owner of the property at West, 5 West 110th Street. The applicant is seeking four zoning actions to facilitate a development, a zoning map amendment, a zoning text amendment to map the MIH area, and two zoning special permits to waive certain bulk and parking requirements. Some background on the site: the La Hermosa Church is one of the oldest Spanish-speaking churches on the East Coast and moved to this site in 1960 from a location in East Harlem. The project area is coterminous with the area proposed to be rezoned, shown on this map in the black dotted line. So the site includes three full tax lots and portions of two other tax lots. The development site is comprised of the lot owned by La Hermosa, shown on this map in blue, and one owned by the Bethel Church, shown in red. It's worth noting that this red, the Lot 30, the Bethel Church would remain but would join with the La Hermosa lot to form one zoning lot prior to development. The other three lots in this project area contain residential buildings and would not be part of the development site. This is, these are images of the lot currently containing the La Hermosa Church and a vacant parking lot. This is an image looking east where you can see that La Hermosa Church and the adjacent church to remain. So the surrounding area is characterized by a mix of residential, commercial, and institutional uses. Of course, directly across the site is the northeast corner of Central Park. Across Fifth Avenue from the project, there are two 34-story residential towers known as the Schaumburg Plaza. Just south of Schaumburg Towers is the 19-story Africa Center, a combined residential and community facility complex. The project area is currently split between two zoning districts. The site is split between an R-8 and an R-72. Portions within 100 feet of Fifth Avenue have an additional C-14 commercial overlay. A C-19 district is located across Fifth Avenue from the project area, and the applicant is proposing extending that C-19 district 200 feet to the west to incorporate the project For the proposed development, the applicant proposes demolishing the existing three-story church building on Lot 41 and constructing a new mixed-use complex. The three-story church building on Lot 30 would remain. The 33-story building would be approximately 400 feet tall. The building would be approximately 230,000 square feet with approximately 38,000 square feet of community facility floor area. The residential tower would contain approximately 160 residential units, with 50 to 60 of the units being affordable pursuant to MIH, which is proposed to be mapped on the site. The proposed development would have a floor area ratio of 12, the maximum residential FAR in C-19 districts. So there were two major considerations that drove the design of the building. First, the unusual shape of the lot due to the curvature of the road, and also importantly that the church wanted to maintain a separate civic presence on the circle and didn't want their congregational facility subsumed within the residential building. The design responds to these constraints with the church entrance on Central Park North and the residential entry on Fifth Avenue, and I do know that the applicant is preparing a much longer presentation for Wednesday to address some of these design concerns. But here is an updated rendering since the last time this was in front of the Commission, showing that portion of the development, which would be the church congregation along a long froley circle. To facilitate the development, the applicant is seeking a special permit to waive elements of the tower's bulk that exceed a tower on the base envelope. These specifically include waivers to the street wall requirements, tower lot coverage requirements, tower packing requirements, and a minimum base height requirement. And these are the findings of the bulk waiver special permit, which would also be further detailed in the briefing packet. The applicant is also seeking a special permit to waive parking at the development site. And here, just for your information, are the conditions for a waiver that shall facilitate the development that provides at least 20% of units at income-restricted housing. At its full board meeting on June 5th, Manhattan Community Board 10 adopted a resolution recommending denial of the application, with two in favor of the application, 28 opposed to that application, and one abstaining. On August 23rd, the Manhattan Borough President submitted a letter recommending denial of the application. And this concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Levin.
Well, I think the concerns I have about this are pretty clearly reflected in the Borough President's recommendation, and I guess can be interpreted from the community board's application, but I do hope the applicant can tell us a little bit more about the proposed scale here. As I expressed at, when this was referred out, I think, you know, the eastern side of the circle is really something quite different. And if you look across 100 and, Central Park North, 110th Street, you see a pretty consistent built form, and particularly the new development at the opposite corner, is it Frederick Douglass Circle, does a really nice job of creating a circle, putting an endpoint on the development of that frontage. And, you know, were it not for the desire, well, I guess the as-of-right development would get you there on this site, but this site is, in addition, complicated by the desire to have the freestanding church, which I think is really a land use and planning and urban streetscape challenge. And another aspect of it is the fact that I understand they're buying the development rights from the Bethel Church. Bethel Church will remain as basically a gap in the mouth, three-story building with nothing to happen with that site, which I think is problematic. So I hope as the applicant team is putting together those presentations, their presentation for Wednesday, they can elaborate a little bit more on the landscape rationale here. To say nothing of their plans for affordable housing.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yeah, we'd talked about some of these design issues last time, and I do think, I mean, the rendering they show in Slide 10 of the, of the street wall, there is a big improvement on what they'd done before. It's a bit more, it's not exactly what we'd hoped for, but it's better than it was. But we'd also commented on the fact that they have setbacks where they don't really matter on the west of the building, on the tower, and a sheer drop on the, on the street side. And we talked about simply flipping that and putting the setbacks where they would be helpful on the street. But I don't see any change in that, so maybe they can address that on Wednesday also.
Other comments? Okay, we'll see this on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Item 18 is the Bronx Special District Text Update, which we have on for continued hearing on Wednesday. I don't see any further questions on that, but we can, we'll have a post-hearing as well. Moving on to future votes, staff have prepared reports for consideration on August 28th for the following: 776 through 780 Myrtle Avenue, the Bay Ridge Parkway-Dr. Rowe Historic District, 121 Chambers Street, the Downtown Flushing Bid Expansion. And also scheduled for decision on Wednesday, August 28th, is One Sunset Hill Drive in Staten Island. On Monday, September 3rd, we have a special meeting for, at 12 o'clock, to consider the Borough-Based Jails application, and Taylor Wolfson, or Eugenia, no, Taylor, okay. Both of you are here to discuss.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. We are back today for our third post-hearing follow-up for the Borough-Based Jails proposal. So as a reminder, on July 29th, just to run through what we've done thus far, on July 29th, we went through, the departments recommended urban design changes to the proposal, as well as responses to questions that came up at the hearing on July 10th. And then on August 12th, we went through some additional questions, responses to questions from the commissioners that came up at the July 29th review session, including alternate Bronx sites and ground floor uses. We also went through the master planning process and community engagement work done thus far by the applicant. Today, we'll be going through a number of items. First, we will start with a recap of the changes that the Commission will be making to the proposal. Sorry, I think this is the wrong version of the, we can, we can make it work, okay. Apologies. But we'll be then going through the future design process, so starting with engagement with the department and the Commission, followed by community engagement with outside stakeholders. We'll be then going through the HPD disposition post-U-LARP, and finally finishing with some additional information on the Lincoln Correctional Facility. So apologies if I'm jumping around with some slides here. Okay. So... So first, starting with some recaps of the changes to the proposal. So since we went through most of these changes about a month ago at this point, we just wanted to first remind the commission of the changes that you'll be making to the proposal regarding changes for multiple sites. So the commission will be on the left side of the screen. The commission will be decreasing the square footages of the four facilities while maintaining the heights to ensure design flexibility. The commission will be applying setbacks, varying setbacks to each of the facilities. Retail depth will be increased at the Bronx, Brooklyn, and Queens facilities, and minimum heights and depths will be added to the main entrances to establish civic presence. On the right side of the screen are changes that will be applied to specific sites. So in Brooklyn, the option of the Sky Bridge over State Street will be removed, and the minimum transparency requirements will be increased from what had been requested. In Manhattan, the arcade proportions will be increased, and in Queens, the community facility will be moved from the jail facility to the base of the parking garage. So we also agree, as many commissioners have noted, that while these modifications are a first step in the right direction, design must continue to be an integral part of the design process moving forward. And so on the screen here, you can see the guiding principles that Eric from our urban design team shared with the commission on July 29th. These principles guided the changes that the commission is making to the application, and we believe that they should continue to guide design considerations moving forward. And so with that, I will hand it over to Eugenia from our design team.
Thank you, Taylor. Good afternoon, commissioners. Sorry, we have to, oh, this doesn't have the slide. Okay. Apologies for that. So hopefully we'll get the right presentation, but you should have just received a letter that outlines the commitment from DDC and the applicant team on the post-ULP design review for both the commission and the department. You and I have had time to review it, maybe this gives an opportunity to do that. But what we will do through the slide that we put together is give you a chance to understand and for us to explain in detail what the commitment is from DDC and the applicant team
We're waiting for this. Would we want to discuss the Lincoln Correctional Facility?
Sorry about the technical difficulties. So regarding the Lincoln Correctional Facility, you received a letter on Friday with some additional information, and so we just wanted to share some of that information with you today again. So the Lincoln Correctional Facility is about 69,600 square feet and houses about 275 people in detention. The proposed women's facility is likely to be approximately 250,000 square feet, about 1,000 square feet per person in custody. And so the existing Lincoln facility would provide about a quarter of that space, about 250 square feet per person. And we would also want to note that the proposed Queens site has extensive public transit access, so within a quarter-mile radius, the project area is accessible via the Union Turnpike, Kew Gardens subway station on Queens Boulevard, which is accessible both via the E and the F trains. And it's also, there's also 15 buses serving the area, including 13 express bus routes and two local bus routes.
The reason we're emphasizing that is that, obviously, the Borough President kindly offered this location, which does have good transit access, but our point is, one, it's an old-style jail that doesn't meet the needs for wanting to close Rikers. The amount of square footage per person there would be a quarter of what would be provided in Queens. It's also arranged as a fundamentally different type of facility. It is a facility that had been used for people who were out on work release throughout the day, not spending their full time within the facility. We emphasize the transit access because the transit access to Rikers is so challenging, whereas on the Queens site, one has not only the subway line, but also so many bus lines that would be available to people coming to visit a women's facility there.
I think we got the presentation. Great. Okay, so we can resume. So here, we wanted to discuss the commitment from DDC and the applicant team on the post-ULP design review for both the commission and the department. As you can see summarized on this slide, DDC and the applicant team will brief the commission after ULP approval to provide an update on the project delivery process, the timeline for that, the design guidelines that will be incorporated into any procurement document or any other type of document, and also community engagement. Subsequently, DDC will also brief the commission before issuing the RFP, and I'll provide a little bit more detail on to what that sequence is for the award of these contracts, and will provide an overview of the design guidelines as they pertain to urban design that will be incorporated in the RFP, RFPs, I should say. And then finally, after the award of the design build contracts, they will also brief the commission to provide an overview of the winning conceptual design. DDC and the applicant team are also committing to provide any additional briefings at the request of the chair. As to the involvement of the department, DDC and the applicant team will meet regularly with city planning staff to gather design input throughout the process. And at a minimum, they're committing to involve the department into these four steps. During the development of the RFQ and the RFP, after each RFP is issued, DCP will be a member of the technical and design evaluation teams. And then after the award of contracts, and then finally after the completion of the final design, to gather any additional feedback that the department may have.
If I could make a few observations here. Eugenia very properly focused on RFPs because we think it important that we maintain a role throughout all four so that there can be continuous learning from the first that would be incorporated into the second, the third, and the fourth. So that was something that we thought was important. The second thing that, wearing my department hat, that I think is most significant, is that we will be part of the RFP response evaluation team because so much will ride on who the selected team is. With respect to the timing of briefings to the commission, we were able to identify what we thought were three very significant phases, and again, I emphasize for each of the facilities. But because this is our first time through, because it's not known when other briefings would be necessary, DDC agreed that additional briefings would be provided at the request of the chair, and I would welcome the input of the commissioners. I'll certainly exercise my judgment as to when I think there is information there that is worth bringing forward. But if the commissioners feel that it's been a while, you want an update, we would be glad to do it. Throughout this, DDC has quite properly pointed out that in design build, there are certain confidentiality requirements, which we, of course, will respect, recognizing that our meetings are publicly aired meetings. But we think that there will be opportunities, in addition to the three that are outlined there, to come back to the commission to get the feedback, to get the input from the commission.
Yes. And to put that into perspective on where the process, where these touchpoints will happen, here you have more of a high-level diagram of a typical design bid-build process for a typical project. As some of you may know, the first phase is usually the schematic design phase, where the level of definition of all the elements of the project is about 30% complete. The following phase is the design development, where the project is about 60% complete, and then the construction document phase, where project is mostly complete and getting ready to enter construction. DCP and CPC review usually happens quite early in this process, really at the stage of a project that are more around conceptual design and schematic design. And the CPC gets to review these projects where they're about 30% complete across the process of project development, which can also be called 100% of schematic design. Now, to give you an idea of how this process for this project will compare to a typical one, as you know, for the Borough Base Jail project, the applicant team will be following a variation of this, which is called design build. So after ULP approval, an RFQ will be released, followed by RFPs. And it is at this stage that we expect the completion of the project to be around that of schematic design, or around 30% of the entire project development. And then the design for the projects will be then further developed during the post-award phase. As we mentioned earlier, DDC and the applicant team have committed of keeping us included in the process post-ULP that will allow both the department and the commission to stay involved in the review and to provide guidance for the applicant team in between the RFP phase and before the post-award. And this will be the stage that is relatively equivalent to the level of schematic design, which is what the CPC is used to seeing for a regular project. Now, to that end, we wanted to provide an example of a project that has appeared before the commission in the past, where the level of completion was about that of schematic design. This is the Gowanus CSO tank site in Gowanus, Brooklyn. For this project, the commission has reviewed early stages of site and masting concept, facade concept, and open space concept. And what you see here are some of the drawings that were available for the commission as certification. So you can see from these architectural drawings, there was some definition of the major moves for the project, but also some of the architectural elements were starting to be defined at this stage. And this is the level of detail that we expect for this project to reach after the RFPs and the beginning of the post-award phase, where the commission will be briefed on this post-ULP. Now, finally, I just wanted to address a request that came from the commission. In previous session, the commission had expressed a desire to reach out to the co-chairs of Design Committee for the Justice Implementation Task Force, Purnima Kapoor and Rosalie Ginevro, after their testimony at the public hearing. So the department has reached out to them, and we received some constructive feedback for the commission on design priorities for this project. Ms. Kapoor has shared that the Justice Implementation Task Force is actually looking at the design build process and wants to ensure that the design remains a key consideration throughout this process. She would also encourage the applicant team to think about these buildings as civic structures, particularly at the ground floors, and activating the ground floors, which is such an important element, to break down the boundaries between the community and the building. She also would like to caution the commission against being too prescriptive with requirements that may impede good design. She mentioned that architects should have enough flexibility in the allowed envelope to make room for design innovation. She was less-
If I could just highlight on that, that she shared our view that height should not force a squatter building necessarily, that she encouraged liberal use of the height so as to allow the architects to articulate.
Yes, that's exactly what she shared. For example, the height, she was less concerned about that if what the outcome was, was a better-designed building. She also stressed the importance of assigning a significant amount of weight to design during the RFQ and RFP processes, and that the review of those should not just be based on operational consideration and lowest costs. Then finally, she also mentioned that DCP's urban designers and PDC should be part of the review process to ensure that design-oriented and technical expertise is part of devaluation, and potentially integrating peer review as well from other designers that are not the designers, the architects on the project. Similarly, Ms. Ginevro recognized the need for a very engaged, powerful advisory panel providing design and architectural expertise that would work with DDC throughout the process. She also recommended that project delivery across the foresight could be offset or phased, or you could say staggered, so that, to ensure that every project will have a chance to learn from the previous one. And since this is kind of the first time that we're doing something like this, she thought that that could be an important way of phasing the delivery of the projects. And then finally, Ms. Ginevro also mentioned the importance for DCP staff to stay involved post-ULP, to review all the elements of the proposal. And what you can see here is a summary of those conversations that we've had and the feedback we've received, and the department also agrees with these priorities. I should note that we've shared these priorities with DDC staff, and what we've heard was that on design, design will be substantially weighted. They expect that in the RFP and RFQ processes, which we were happy to hear. DDC also expects to rely on its consultants, who really bring an extensive design expertise, but it's also considering potentially including peer review into devaluation of the applications that they'll be receiving. As to DCP's involvement, you've seen in a previous slide how they outlined the touchpoints for the post-ULP. And then finally, DDC is currently reviewing, on the last point, existing guidelines that are available and trying to understand how they can incorporate them as to define this process.
A couple of observations on this. Ms. Ginevro, in particular, emphasized the importance of having any community review or advisory committee be informed by people who were, not just laypeople, who will have important additions, but also by people with architectural or urban design expertise. She also noted that it was important for the department to make a commitment to this project. On both of those, we agree wholeheartedly. This is a priority for the department. We intend to continue to make the significant talents of our urban design division and our borough offices as well available as these proceed, and certainly would welcome, if a community process or a process facilitated by a Borough President is going forward, we would welcome their invitation to us to provide expertise, our input to that as well.
Yes. So before I hand it off to Taylor to finish the presentation, we welcome any questions you may have on the design piece of the presentation.
Yes, Commissioner Bernie.
So it strikes me that two really critical parts of this process is the preparation of the RFP and the RFQ and the documents, because they set the tone, they set the circumstances, the conditions on which proposals are made. And the second is the evaluation criteria that are used to select the successful bidder. So to what extent are we going to have real input into that process? Are we actually going to be able to participate in what the evaluation criteria are, what's included in the RFP documentation?
I am confident that the department will be involved, not just at the RFP stage, but at the RFQ stage, and then throughout developing the criteria for the RFP, and we will be part of the selection committee. Because of confidentiality concerns, we are not going to be discussing in a public hearing which of the applicants will be selected. So that is the balance that we struck, which is an intensive role for the department, which is what we do before we present matters for certification to the commission, particularly on city projects. And as I mentioned before, I put a lot of weight on having us be part of the selection. If passed as prologue, our working with both DDC, MOCJ, and the consulting team that has been put together, the AECOM Hill, has been a pleasure. It has not been an adversarial or fighting for every inch of ground. As you could see on the design changes that were recommended by the commission and by the department, they've welcomed them, haven't been begrudging. And the other thing that I have to emphasize again, I'm so pleased that there was agreement that we would remain involved throughout the four. Now, it may be that they will go together in batches of more than one, but I do think it important on this first time through that we learn- it important on this first time through that we learn from the first project going through to inform the second, third, and fourth.
I mean, the same question applies to the 30% review as well. I mean, is that simply, you know, an advisory commentary, or is there some real meat in what the commission or the department can input?
It is advisory. It is not another approval. We don't have another approval process, and most clearly is not another ULP. The reason we honed in on the 30% was we went back and we looked at what the commission typically sees, and the commission doesn't have ULP at the end of the process as a project is about to be built. And so we thought that this 30% is what made sense. I think it entirely reasonable to, post-award, to come back with check-ins along the way. But to your point, I think that the most significant decisions that will shape the project are going to occur prior to that 30% design development.
Yeah. And the final comment I want to make was, you mentioned the possibility of peer review. I mean, peer review used to be a standard procedure at DDC, so I wonder why is it not a standard committed procedure here? It's extremely valuable. They used to do it on all major projects. I think it would be really important addition to the process. I would like them to commit to that, not say it's a possibility.
We can certainly go back to DDC on this. What I would suggest is that both the useful input that we got from both Purnima and Rosalie, that those are the qualitative factors that we had discussed before, as opposed to the quantitative 10-foot setback here, no skybridge, and that those will be incorporated in the commission's report as part of our considerations. And if DDC is unable to commit to peer review, we can certainly, in our report, note that the commission urges, and we can use the strongest terms, and notes the value of peer review. I know throughout this, DDC has shared our sense that this is the first time that design-build is being done, and that the city, which would like to take advantage of this construction technique and appropriate projects, shares our interest in having it done right. If done right the first time, it certainly will facilitate this commission's review of subsequent projects.
I mean, certainly, GSA does peer review on all their design-build projects also, and there's a mechanism there, and why not use it?
And certainly, we could incorporate in our report a reference to the GSA process and the fact that the commission would urge that DDC take seriously and look at this. Yes, Commissioner Rampershad.
I have a question with regards to the height. I understand the need for flexibility, but when I look back, I look at these conceptual sections that were on the handouts before. For example, on the Queens site, the floor-to-floor plates are 20 feet in height for a male therapeutic, I can't really read it out because it's very light, but in Manhattan, they're using 15 feet. So is there a reason why they're using 20 in Queens and then 15 in Manhattan, and then I saw 15 in the Bronx? So is there, can they clarify?
We can go back and ask the applicant team. Our understanding is that depending on how the units are structured, there's a difference between the therapeutic and the regular ones. That's what the Perkins Eastman team has explained to us, because some are double-height, and they need to include two levels of cells, so residential units and then a common space. But we can go back and ask what the difference is between those two.
I saw that in the Bronx one, but the Queens one, with the exception of where the detainees are, I understand the need for 20 feet because there's a mezzanine level. But from what I see here, there's no, I guess, justification for double-height there, so it was just one of the clarifications.
Yeah, we'll go back and we'll ask the team, of course.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, you know, the challenge for us here is that the design-build process really gets ahead of the public review process that's laid out in ULP. And the process that you've lined out here for DCP and the commission's engagement seems like a good balancing and appropriate touchpoints. But there are several other very important players in ULP that risk being cut out of this process, and that's the community board and the borough president. Maybe I'm just forgetting that we've already talked about community engagement, but I think it's crucial for public acceptance of the design-build process that we have a commitment to effective transparency and public information, akin to the kind of public information that's provided in the ULP process. We need to figure out how to build this in, because otherwise, if we don't, first off, we might get some good advice, and at a minimum, we will get public buy-in to the use of design-build in place of ULP.
I'll note that this portion of our discussion is solely about the commission and the department, and that DDC has previously given us a separate letter on community engagement, which goes to exactly the points that you make. The prior letter didn't address the ones that, speaking very personally, are hugely important to me, wearing both my commission and department hat, but this is honing in very narrowly on our portion of it, and the separate letter, which we'll gladly recirculate, goes far more broadly to the engagement of the community board, the borough president, and the various advisory groups.
Okay. That's helpful, and thanks for reminding me. We've gotten a lot of subsequent communications on this, I'm sure I have it in the pile. But for our report, then, I do think it's important that we include a passage that discusses the relationship of the design-build process to the ULP process, and that lays out those additional communicative commitments to the community boards, you know, to a construction advisory process for the public and to this process for the department and the commission.
That's a great reminder. We'll make sure that the report addresses both of them.
Okay. And yeah, and mentions the parallels to ULP, the challenges that this poses for ULP, and we're still working within a ULP function and trying to figure out how to allow design-build go forward, because we're persuaded it's an effective way to build a large project like this, but we have to do it in a way that doesn't undermine the public process that we're committed to under the charter.
And the purpose of ULP. Okay.
Great, thank you. I'll hand it off to Taylor as she finishes the presentation.
We're actually making our way next to community engagement? Yes.
Perfect segue.
So yes, as we, we know that the commission has shared a number of, had a number of questions and shared some concerns, and so this letter was shared with the commission on Friday. And so this is specific to the community engagement moving forward. So previously, on August 12th, we had discussed community engagement that the applicant team had done up to this point, and now, as you said, we are looking forward. So the team has broken down their engagement into six different groups, stakeholder groups that they'll be focusing on. And so, beginning with the design advisory group, as we've discussed before, the design advisory group first met in May, and they're going to continue to meet quarterly moving forward. This group is comprised of both city agencies as well as representatives from the borough presidents, the affected borough presidents, and the speaker. And what they will be doing is reviewing and providing feedback on the design guidelines and principles that are part of the RFQ and RFP documents as they relate to things like the public realm, streetscape, and building materials.
I'll note that City Planning is a member of the design advisory group.
Yes. Regarding the Justice Implementation Task Force, the task force has been meeting now for, I believe, about two years. There are three working groups, but specific to the design working group, which, as mentioned before, Purnima and Rosalie are the co-chairs of, this working group will advise on the language in the RFQ and the RFP to ensure that design remains prominent in the procurement documents as well as the procurement selection process.
And on this one, I'll clarify that even after leaving the Department of City Planning, Purnima remains as co-chair of this task force.
Yes. And just to add, there are, there's also the population reduction working group and the culture change working group, and so those working groups are continuing to meet as well and provide feedback on elements such as the program. Regarding the neighborhood advisory committees, so the city will be reconvening these neighborhood advisory committees to provide regular updates and solicit feedback on the program, design goals, and the development of the design guidelines, which will inform the RFPs. The city will also continue to provide regular updates during the design and construction of the facilities. During construction, there will also be community construction liaisons, and they will be onsite and available to the public in order to provide information, respond to concerns, and resolve any issues that come up. And lastly, regarding, oh, not lastly, regarding community-based organizations, MACJ will continue to meet with community-based organizations in order to receive feedback on the program, and the jail's moving forward. And it was these meetings that, for instance, led to the centralization of women, so.
The other thing I'll note again, it goes without saying that as any of these meetings occur, if there is a request for design input, the department will be glad to make our pros available.
Yes. And finally, as with all public projects, the facilities will have to go to the Public Design Commission for review. So as part of this process, there will be public hearings and design-specific reviews with the affected community boards.
And while the department doesn't sit on the Public Design Commission, we do have a liaison who works closely with the PDC staff and attends the meetings.
Yes, and a member of the PDC is also involved in the design advisory group as well. And so, lastly, is the, is a follow-up. There was a question at the last review session regarding the commission's and the department's review of the future design of the mixed-use development adjacent to the proposed Bronx jail facility. And so HPD shared a letter with the commission, which you have in front of you, and in this letter, HPD agrees to seek input from DCP as they refine their design plans for the site. This is both before and after they issue the RFP for the site. And they also agreed to present the program and illustrative design for the site to the commission for feedback as well.
This was an attempt to allow the commission to have the type of feedback at the points where usually we would in a ULP process. The other thing I'll note is the letter is signed by Paris Slaughter rather than Louise Carroll, because she is in, fortunately for her, in a corner of Maine that does not have good connectivity, but I spoke with her about this before she headed out and had her strong support for this involvement.
And since we've already discussed the Lincoln Correctional Facility, with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
You haven't covered this, but I just wanted to ask, and I know this is very preliminary at this point, but what, just remind me again, what was the projected total cost for the four facilities?
I believe that it is about $8 to $9 billion, but that is an estimate, and that is continuing to be refined as the team kind of works on the specific size and shape and program of the facilities.
And as the population declines, obviously affects it.
Yeah, because there are lots of numbers being thrown around that are pretty-
All of them big.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rampershad.
So just for clarification, the community engagement, that's going to happen in quarterly, you said?
So it varies by, by group. So the design advisory group will continue to meet quarterly, so that began in May. The next meeting will be in September and moving forward. There will be regular meetings with the neighborhood advisory committees. The city will be reconvening that. And then there will also be engagement with the community boards and the neighborhood advisory committees via the Public Design Commission review, the community construction liaisons. So there's a lot of different engagement going on. We don't have a specific schedule, they're still working on that, but there will be a lot of different points of contact.
And the purpose of the community construction liaisons is to have the most ongoing, direct day-in-and-day-out ability to have interaction. Commissioner Levin.
Back to the HPD letter about the Bronx housing site. I think it's also important that there be a commitment to consultation with the local community before releasing the RFP. That's something that HPD isn't always keen to do, but I think it can be very effective for the community, particularly this community, for helping to shape and understand and ultimately accept the housing that's going to be placed in their midst.
Understood. We'll talk with HPD, thank you.
We'll follow up with HPD. Okay, that's good.
I think they often, they often do it when pressed by a community board, but it would be good to make it a firm expectation here.
Commissioner Eady.
A quick question regarding the HPD Bronx site. What's the timing of that vis-à-vis the issuance of the RFQ, the RFP for the jail site and its design? Will it happen after the jail is designed? Will it happen before? What's the sequencing expected to be there?
Yes, so in a letter from the applicant team in Aug, earlier in August, I guess, they had said that they are planning to have construction of the mixed-use development occur at approximately the same time as the construction of the facility. They are still figuring out details when it comes to staging and components of the jail construction, just such as that, but that is the current plan.
So is the expectation, then, that the two will be designed separately at the same time? I mean, I guess the question becomes whether or not, if the jail designed, if the jail design goes in one direction, whether the housing design would follow in an attempt to complement it or not to be in contradiction to it.
I would imagine, given the longer construction period for the jail, as opposed to a significant but relatively modest-sized affordable housing project, that there would be the opportunity to have a better sense of what, how the jail will be massed before proceeding with the housing site, because the housing can go more quickly. But that's a good consideration, that we're going to want to make sure that HPD and selecting takes into account the relationship between the housing site and the design of the jail.
It's usually stated much better than I did, thank you.
You had the idea.
We can articulate that concern in the report. I think that that's important, and HPD does reference our reports when they come back and look at design.
Other comments? Thank you, Teller.
Moving on to post-hearing follow-ups. The Whitlock Avenue Blue Belt. Are any further questions post-hearing on that? No. 1533 Clintonville Street Commercial Overlay Rezoning. As you were ever accused, but you can stay seated. Anticipate a bit of conversation. Okay. The LaFrock City Parking Garage. 11206 71st Road rezoning. Vernon Boulevard Broadway rezoning. I believe there was a letter. No? No letter on that one? We're still waiting on a letter, then? I think so. 38th Street, 35th Avenue rezoning? Yes.
On that one, were we waiting for additional rationale for the community, for the commercial overlay? I think that was one of the issues that-
That is, yes. This is one I believe that we actually did have a letter anticipated from the-
Yeah, and I didn't see it yet in our package.
No, I don't believe that we had a letter yet. I think that we were, they were working on, so we will-
Follow up with them.
Nudge them on that and get that in the next application or in the next package. 9105 Beach Channel Drive. 13024 South Conduit Avenue Self-Storage. The Peninsula redevelopment, I believe Hala is, is here to discuss, and there was material in the, in the package.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So at the public hearing, there were some items that required follow-up. The applicant team submitted a letter- The applicant team submitted a letter detailing the AMI and unit distribution mitigation, the phasing plan, and private street maintenance. So the applicant team provided the following charts detailing their unit mix and AMI distribution for the project, ranging from 30% to 130% of AMI. Buildings in the earlier phases of the project, including buildings A1, A2, B1, and B2, would take part in HPD's Ella program, ranging from 30% to 80% AMI. Buildings D1, E1, E2, and C1 would provide a mix of 90% and 100% AMI. Building D2, which would be developed senior affordable housing, up to 60% AMI under HPD's Sarah program. Lastly, building C2 would be developed using HPD's Mix and Match program, providing 60% of the units earning up to 80% AMI, and the remaining units between 120% and 130% AMI. The development would provide a mix of Studio 1, 2, and 3-bedroom units, as shown in the bottom chart. Community District 14 passed a resolution stating projects with AMIs less than 60% would not be supported due to the community's interest in providing additional market-rate housing opportunities. This policy is a mechanism used to provide conditions to the project recommendations and not automatic disapproval. The original phasing plan was designed to construct the project from north to south and then from east to west. So Phase 1 would consist of buildings A1 and B1 and provide the supermarket and the second commercial anchor. And then Phase 2 would consist of buildings A2 and B2, which is in green. Phase 3 would consist of C1 and D1 in purple. Phase 4 would be C2 and D2 in orange. And then lastly, Phase 5 would be building E1, E2, F1, and the public plaza space. However, in an effort to provide the plaza space in an earlier phase, the applicant team is revising their phasing plan, and the plaza will now be available in the completion of Phase 4 instead of Phase 5. Lastly, using data from the census, 56.5% of residents within the project's surrounding area have access to at least one car. The applicant is providing more parking than required in order to accommodate some of the vehicle ownership in the area. And with that, I'll answer any remaining questions.
Questions from the commission. Thank you, Hala.
Thank you.
Also for post-hearing, Terrence Cardinal Cook. 363 Lafayette Street. And the Eastside Coastal Resiliency, I believe there is a letter that's provided today, right, Bob?
Yes, that's correct. I think the commissioner's got it on Saturday.
Okay, that's right.
Am I good to go, Ryan?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. Good afternoon, commissioners. So this is the second post-hearing follow-up for the Eastside Coastal Resiliency Project, which is an application that seeks acquisition and text amendment actions to facilitate storm protection along the East River from Montgomery Street to East 25th Street in Community Districts 3 and 6 in Manhattan. The CPZ public hearing for this project was held on July 31st. So at today's session, we will discuss area street improvements, construction phasing, the project's federal funding, external evaluation of the project, and community outreach. And we'll begin with street improvements. So I just wanted to take a quick moment to provide some clarity about the bike routes in the area currently. First and Second Avenue have protected bike lanes that have been created over the last 10 years. Avenue C has a conventional bike lane, which means it's painted but not protected by, let's say, cars or other infrastructure. Avenue C also has conventional bike lanes along the majority of the street, and then it has shared lanes, also known as sharrows, which is where you paint the arrows with the bicycle to show that it's welcoming for cyclists but also for vehicles. And that's along a portion of the street near Houston and then another portion near East 14th Street. Now DOT, as Chair Lago mentioned at the last post-hearing follow-up, is dedicated to looking at the possibility of installation of protected bike lanes on Avenue C, B, C, and/or D. That process is, you had some materials in your package about those, but that process is very heavily community-involved. So they'll go out, they'll do a feasibility study, they present that to the community boards, the electeds, and then it's kind of a rinse and repeat. They take comments back, they go out and do it again, and then they come back. And so there's a number of iterative meetings that produce the possible installation of those or tweak the plan that DOT goes out with. Any questions on this piece?
I had never before thought of it in terms of pro-shampoo terms.
All right, on to the good stuff. So phased construction. So I want to start by bringing us to these two main core goals of this project. That's one, achieving comprehensive flood protection for a vulnerable neighborhood as quickly as possible. In this current plan, the proposal is to have everything completed by Hurricane Season 2023, which is a full year earlier than the previous plan. The second core goal is making improvements to open space and waterfront access for the neighborhood. As we touched on last time but want to go into more detail this time, there are two key factors that make construction phasing incredibly challenging here, and that's sewer reconstruction and fill settlement. Now, the sewer system, whether it be the existing system or the new system, will be, will provide uninterrupted service. So that is a key for construction. Now, the existing sewer line under the East River Park was constructed between the 1930s and 1960s. It's brick. Per DEP standard process, when excavation around these types of sewers is done, they require that the sewer be replaced with a new system that is built to current day-best practices. Additionally, these sewers are simply not capable of handling the weight of the new fill, so they would collapse if, in fact, they were not replaced. So shown here in purple is the complex network of proposed outfalls and sewers. Now, these would be constructed while the existing sewer system continues to operate. When completed, then the sewer system would be, the new sewer system would be placed online while the existing sewer would be decommissioned. And then during construction of those sewers, and so also happening during this time, would be the reinforcement of the bulkhead and construction of the cutoff wall along the river's edge. Now, the cutoff wall is a structure that holds all of the fill in place once the building up of the park is done. The sewer outfalls need to be punched through the cutoff wall as part of the proposed sewer work. So all of that is happening simultaneously. Also in this period of time, timber pilings beneath the park, existing ones will be reinforced and extended, additional pilings will be added. Those are, serve as decks for various components of the park, most notably the esplanade along the waterfront. Now, after the sewer has transitioned from the existing pipes to the new pipes and the cutoff wall is constructed, the fill will be added to the park or can begin to settle. Also, the footings for the three pedestrian bridges will be placed along the inland side of the park to provide connection over the FDR. As the settlement process approaches completion, the horticultural fill is added. And once the settlement of both the general fill and the horticultural fill is complete, the paving of all necessary surfaces occurs. This is then immediately followed by the landscaping of the area. Planting seasons in New York are limited to March 1st through May 15th in the spring and then October 1st through December 15th in the fall. Missing one planting season window means waiting until the next planting season. So I would say, understanding the constraints and the challenges and the goal of delivering flood protection as quickly as possible, and in this case, within three and a half years, the city has and is continuing to remain committed to determining if there are other opportunities for phasing. They believe that this will be heavily informed by work of the Program Management Construction Management Team, which has just recently started reviewing the existing plans. It reviews those plans and the assumptions made for those plans and compares them against current industry standards based on construction trends and will make a recommendation to the city about any possible phasing opportunities. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll note on this that Jamie Torres Springer and I have each significantly spoiled each other's vacations as we went back and forth on discussions. In late terms, what I understand is with respect to the sewer construction, the sewer work has the longest lead time. It's going to take the most time, which is why they anticipate starting all of the sewer work at the beginning so that it won't delay the end of construction. The second, in late terms, is that one could imagine, as soon as the fill has been placed, why don't we immediately then reopen the area? And there is the recognition that the fill needs to settle. And then, secondly, that the plantings have to occur in certain prime planting seasons and need to set before the public can be provided access. So some things that might, as a layperson, you say, wait, the second it's done, let's reopen it, might not make sense from the long-term health of the park. That said, DDC is looking at whether there could be the possibility for keeping certain sections open during the first construction season and then reopening sections towards the end of the construction period. It's too soon to know whether it's possible and where it would be, but certainly, in my conversations with Jamie, DDC clearly has heard that the issue of phasing is probably first among all of the issues raised by the community. And with that, we'll gladly take questions. Commissioner Bernie.
So I'm assuming that all of those DP sewer outfalls are stormwater. I sincerely hope they're not CSOs. It's a stormwater system, right?
I believed it was CSO, but I can verify that. But I believe this is part of the combined sewer outflows.
Well, that's outrageous. Are you telling me that each of those sewer outfalls is a CSO? I mean, why aren't they taking the opportunity to disconnect the storm system from the waste? That would be, no, I can't believe.
I can check.
Yeah. I would imagine what they're going to do, what they should be doing, is first of all, disconnecting the stormwater from the dark waste, which they'll do on the city side of the FDR, and that all of that system that you see there leading to the sewer outfalls is a stormwater management system that's delivering rainwater into the river in a relatively clean, relatively clean way. So having said that.
Yes, my apologies. I'm talking about, I was talking about the existing system. I will.
Oh, the existing system is.
I will for sure double-check with you on the proposed.
So I mean, this is a huge opportunity, actually, to clean up our act here in what we're currently doing and improving it immensely. And I think that's a huge, that's a huge benefit. But it does speak to the issue of phasing, because I'm assuming that the first thing they'll have to do is that disconnection of the stormwater from the dark waste, which they'll do on the city side. And then, having done that, you might find a way to phase the actual stormwater system for the park.
And we'll follow up with DEP and clarify. Other comments? Okay, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, no, I haven't ended this show yet. Sorry.
Sorry.
I thought it was a thanks, I thought it was a thanks for that one. I mean, I'm happy to leave, but.
Yeah.
Federal funding. So as already, as has already been mentioned, the primary goal of this project is to achieve comprehensive flood protection by Hurricane Season 2023. So an additional time consideration is the expiration of the federal funds, which is happening in September 2022. While the city is primarily motivated by its first goal, they have obviously been cognizant of this upcoming deadline of September 2022. They've spoken with Congresswoman Velazquez and other members of Congress since mid-2017 about extending the deadline through an act of Congress. There are no possible extensions through HUD, so it would require an act of Congress. The city has been so far unsuccessful in getting language attached to any of the bills in Congress. So the city remains committed to spending the money and time. The plan that's been presented, they believe that they can do that. I'll note that during the public hearing, you heard that the city had not been engaged with the Congresswoman's office. We believe that since the city was speaking directly with the DC office, there was miscommunication with the local office, and that's what caused the inaccurate statement. But we do promise you that the city has been very involved in speaking with our elected officials in DC.
Our jaws dropped when we heard that at the hearing because we knew that our federal office, the city's federal liaison, had been in touch with the DC office.
Concerning that the local office doesn't know that.
Then external evaluation of the project. So at the last post-hearing follow-up, Commissioner Bernie mentioned the city's normal process regarding external review of capital projects. So we wanted to explain a little bit of the process as it relates to Eastside Coastal Resiliency. So the value management review is led by OMB, which is the typical process, or that's who typically does this for capital projects of this size and scope. And that involves a panel of independent experts with experience in similar projects around the country, and they convene in conjunction with project stakeholders to review and provide an outside perspective on the design. There's also a constructibility review, which was performed last summer, and that happens at the design point when construction risk can actually be assessed, assessed, rather. Professional scrutiny of the construction methods helps to make sure that complex projects will be completed with the minimum constructibility risk and on time. Now, some have also requested that architects from the Netherlands and/or Denmark review proposed projects, and I just want to note that BIG and Arcadis, who are the consultants that the city hired for this project, in fact, fit that bill. The project also has a separate consultant that is specifically for the environmental impact statement. The city is committed to using the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure's Envision Framework to assess and verify this project, and this review is currently in progress. And that review looks at sustainable, it looks at metrics across a network of, pardon me, of a variety of sustainability indicators, which include social, environmental, and economic indicators. And then additionally, as mentioned earlier, the Program Management Construction Management Team will review the existing plans and assumptions and compare those against industry standards. It then packages those for project bids and helps with the procurement. So all that to say is there are, while many of these have been hired by the city, there's a lot of different consultant teams looking at the same project. But then there are also, through this OMB process, there's a value management and constructibility review that are external parties. Happy to take any questions.
I mean, much as I hate to heap praise on my old nemesis, OMB, that OMB process isn't bad, actually. They do bring in consultants from around the country that have expertise in the topic. And they don't do every project because they have pretty limited resources, but have they actually said they're going to do it for this project? Because I do think it's a valuable project.
They did, they did for this project.
Good.
And last on to community outreach. So since the fall of last year, the Esca project team has participated in nearly 65 meetings with local stakeholders. The project team also writes a lot of letters and responds to a lot of email. The city's outreach strategy has really been focused on large groups, such as Community Board 3 and 6, and also very focused on local stakeholders, such as NYCHA tenants and tenant associations. So going forward, the city plans to use that same type of engagement strategies, continuing to go to the community board meetings. In fact, they have some coming up with Board 3 and 6. But then also having the very focused meetings with tenant associations, which they've identified. And then they also, when talking to the community boards, ask the community boards if there's any in-particular group that they think they should talk to as they talk about through the different design phases. So they'll continue to do all of those pieces. They also, they also are completely willing to participate in a community advisory group that's specifically focused on this project if elected officials would like to form one. They think it's important that elected officials have a voice in forming the community advisory group because the selection process and the wide group of stakeholders, I think it's important for those that represent a neighborhood to be part of picking that group.
Basically, DDC was saying they're not committing to one particular process because they think it needs to be driven by the elected officials in the community, and they are glad to participate in whatever way they're asked to.
And then I'll just mention that, as Taylor mentioned, for borough-based jails, DDC has a community construction liaison. That liaison is responsible for keeping the stakeholders informed by identifying and documenting and resolving issues. The liaisons are the link between the intergovernmental.